Okay, we are now in session for our meeting. We have three of our three councilor seats, so we do have a forum, so I'll move to a roll call and audience introduction starting in the back.
The citizen. You don't think this is. You're in her. And this is.
What's her.
He won't hurt anything.
On global guys, this is.
It's perfect. Branding Maddox, citizen.
Blair River. Should have been fire.
Three so rightly. Eleven. Captain for an hour. Kathy Cook, citizen.
Ronald Reddish.
Doug Arco, city engineer.
Very good.
Patrick Farrell, citizen.
Mr. Miller, city clerk.
Kevin Person, city council.
The only town, city council. I never would have exceeded his mouth.
And it's going to be mayor. Thank you, everybody. Now bring Sam into our place of religion. Pleasure being here. But you know how to say it. If this time, if somebody would like to give any particular.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, Larry, thank you for this opportunity at self governance, and we ask that you would do it, help us to do this humbly and with with regard to one another as citizens, and thank you for this opportunity. We pray for a good meeting in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
And you. Because I did the opening of meeting. And you're very, very pleased to do that.
Um, I have a part grant to add to the grants notice of the boil water notice. I can. And just a fair book. Communication.
Okay, so moving forward, approve our agenda as presented, council. For.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to make a motion to accept most the. The agenda for this evening.
Thank you. Madam President, we have proven your agenda and then they consent agenda. I sense that it's on their minds. Okay. All right. Council Bourbon Banks made a motion to approve our agenda presented. Counselor Catmull.
Like to second that motion to approve the agenda.
Motion made by Council Bourbon Bank, seconded by Council Catmull to approve the agenda as presented, open for discussion. No discussion, Council Bourbon Bank, how do you vote?
I.
Council Catmull.
I.
Council Ferguson.
I.
Thank you, council. Agenda is approved, three eyes to three open seats. Approve our consent agenda, which includes bills, minutes, and reports. As presented. Counsel Ferguson.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented, bills, minutes, and reports.
Council Bourbon Bank.
I'd like to second that, please.
Council Ferguson made the motion, Council Catmull. Bourbon Bank seconded motion to approve our consent agenda as presented, open or any for any, open for discussion. Kathy.
Yeah, um, the part in the last statement, which I guess is the bills, because there's no bill statement to get. Um, and I'd like to make a note that it's extremely hard to use. Would have been nice to want to email them to look at it better.
Thank you. Noted. Any further discussion? No further discussion, Council Bourbon Bank.
I.
Council Catmull.
I.
Council Ferguson.
I.
Our council has approved our consent agenda as presented, three eyes, three open seats. Um, we're to announcements and proclamations. Our June work session is rescheduled to May 30th at 4:30. Um, Aprils. Oh, wait a minute. Yeah, June work session is rescheduled to May 30th at 4:30 PM, due to sport being gone in June. And it's a reminder, the office will be closed June 6th, 7th, and 8th for training. And Council Ferguson will be on medical leave starting May 29. Public hearings, we don't have any public.
Water, boil water notice.
Oh, as hopefully everybody knows, we're under a boil water notice. Joe has located the leak. He's here now. The leak is exposed. We know where the leak is. It's a oh, pinball sized leak, so to speak. Um, we're also going to have the, we've been in contact with the Oregon Health Authority and Urban Communication. We'll have. Um, three pallets of bottled water dropped out in the next few days. Um, the patch should be repaired. Hopefully tomorrow, if not the next day. Um, we're still going to receive with the state coming out with their. Their people to possibly do. Uh, more of a major repair on the water line that's had a couple fails in that section. Um, this happened, Doug, our city engineer was here, and he concurred that that would be the best thing to do right now is to let state come out and if they're willing to consider with a back or a replacement of a deteriorating line. So you had to. You had everything you need for the diameter and everything for that pad.
Um. That took me while I had to take the rocks out from underneath it to. Get something in there to get it, but I got me, I had a. Piece of a, I didn't have any strength, so I used some weightier line. Okay.
That's how it works. Perfect.
Yes, people on this. Will not be able to move along. I think this may need to be a better communication to let everybody in the city who uses the water system know that they need boil water.
There's three notices posted and the emergency manager did a great, become bridge.
Reverse nine one one.
Reverse nine one one, going up to 147.
Do they always do that?
I never got that number. No.
No. Is that the first time they've done it? Oh, because that's the first time I've ever received.
We were just made aware of that at our last boil water. So it is until we will. If. Of coming, and Council Bourbon Bank.
Thank you. Is that going to be at the city's expense? The state's going to.
The state will come in. Doug knows the engineer. If they do bring an engineer out, it'll all be on, the state does have emergency management set aside for emergency repairs.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so did you notice because of the leak or do you have a bigger report on the whole point? We have not, we currently hold a sample or will get a sample, it'll be taken in tomorrow. Um, OHA's advice says we cannot lift a boil water notice until they tell us. After the repair, we have to do another set of anyways, so I went and get a sample to see where we're at, where. Any other questions about others? No. Open public comment.
Randy Matt.
Oh, right now?
Open public comment.
It is. I was, what, ready? Oh.
Yeah, you have two minutes.
Okay, and so I basically just wanted to object to changing the park. Um, I feel like it's been there a super long time. It's like a landmark of what Mitchell is. And I, I really strongly object to putting in new playground equipment. Classic can burn you just as much as that metal on that side can. And I feel like people can have common sense with their kids down there, and I'm not saying accidents would never happen, but I would like to know how much is the insurance going to raise it? Why can we not pick a different insurance company? Like, I have questions about why we can't just keep it the way it is. So I'm just saying that, you know, like, my first question is, why do we need to do this? And my second question is, how much is it really going to raise the insurance? Do we know for a fact that it's going to, that it's absolutely going to? And if the park is dangerous, there's other reasons, you know, for it to be dangerous, and it's playground equipment, and you can't fix some of that stuff. It's just a part of how our park is, and how it's beautiful. And I just, it's been there for so long. Like, I just, I think it's a terrible waste to take it down, and I don't think it's going to fix because it just got fixed, the chains and stuff were fixed recently. Within the last probably seven years. So some of that stuff's already been fixed, and it's, you know. I personally have swaying on it as an adult, and I don't think that it's any more dangerous than, you know what I mean, the road or anything else.
I.
Good.
And I mean, I understand that you, you know, that you mentioned that we have a deal, that it might go bad, that the city doesn't want to spend a bunch of money on new stuff, then just leave it the way it is. You know what I mean? Like, why spend money that we don't need to spend? We have water problems, three problems, as have been mentioned, and a lot of whole things that are more important, changing the equipment that's been there for almost 100 years. So.
It's broken.
It's not broken at all, you know? So, anyway.
Yes. Thank you.
Kathy Cook?
Yeah.
You have two minutes, Kathy.
I will discuss the ordinance, my ordinance digits when the ordinance has come up. Um. I have an issue because I'm confused. I'm not, I asked on April 20th that all public correspondents for the city, all the meeting notes, all that stuff be sent to me via email. I'm not getting the email. I am purposely being, I don't know if it's everybody, or if it's me singled out, or a few of us singled out. I requested these emails, according to the organ meeting law, any interested citizen that says they want these emails should be getting these emails. I have a problem with that. Just to let you know. And you guys, I've, I've contacted, you know, the city and everything else, saying, hey, I want these emails, and I'm not getting them. If you're worried about mass emails going out other than the agendas and that. I already have everybody's email list and everything else, and the first thing I put out, if I, when I used to do that, I used to said, if you don't want me to contact you, let me know. I'll take you off my list. I haven't got, not got anybody who's done that. In the past. But I think you'll single me out, and I'll receive an email violating organ meeting law.
Anything else?
Yeah. Well, I'm done.
Go next.
Very. Pat Farrell.
Um, on. Thank you. On ordinance, I just, I know we're going to get to this, but I may not be able to stay for it. On ordinance 201, uh, the first page, all the where ads makes it sound like this is about, uh, the city, but then as soon as we get to 201 dot two, permitted camping on private property, um, it seems though there are some stipulations that are being put to the private property owners, whether it's commercial or industrial or private property. Um, and so it seems like on the face of this ordinance, we're dealing with a potential of homeless camping on, on, on city property, but then we go into a lot of details about what, what private property owners can't do and requires them to offer these services for free. Now, full disclosure, we have a hostel, we provide camping, it's for free. Um, but there are other people with commercial property, and it feels like this is the city's unfortunately creating a situation where the city says, we can have camping and earn money from it, but you can't. So that's, I think I'm out a few minutes.
No, yeah, 45 seconds left.
So I'm not, I'm not totally against, it just seems kind of like, it seems unenforceable in some respects, and it doesn't, it, it doesn't jive with its own document, is what it feels like. Like, it feels like zoning should handle camping on private lands, this should handle camping on on city-owned property. Thank you.
Keep in our.
Judy, you have two minutes.
Oh.
You have a public comment you want to make?
Um, yeah, because I don't want anything to tell me what I can do on my own land. And yet, getting pretty close. Uh. Do you have an answer for that?
We will address anyone who comes up. Is that it, Judy?
Uh huh.
Thank you. Who's next?
Alec Freeberg.
Alec, you have two minutes.
Yeah. I told it to me. Um, okay, so in early May, there was a water, or boarding, I came out, I, 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 well, I heard late, but also not informing enough people in the community, several people got sick. From the lack of. Um, further, within two days, the water situation was not resolved, but either the mayor or Chris, I'm not sure which one, but one of the two um, told the state to release the boil water notice, further getting more people sick. Um, at the time that it was lifted, the, the chlorine level in the water were 70 times the recommended limit stated by the Oregon Health Authority. So let me take a break, then I'll let you say. Um. And I still have like a minute, so a brief first meeting. So with that, Steve, it feels like you're using your position again, and I've been saying this since July of last year, you're using your position to target people that, from what it looks like, and from what I'm hearing from the people, you're using your position to target people that maybe are politically against you. And for that, um, and with the outcome of the water risk, I, I pointed out that that looks like an attack on people's toll. Yeah, keep them in the law. Okay, I'll let it come down for a second. Three, two, one, Steve, I continue to ask you to step down from our community, from our city mayor's position, because you are abusing your position. That's all I have to say.
Are you done?
I'm done. That's why I said it's fine.
Thank you. Who's up next?
Ronald Reddish.
Ronald, you have two minutes.
Dave Salvage asked me to read this in my final for the ordinance. To the city of Mitchell and County, the homelessness ordinance banned for fourth is, in our opinion, a waste of time. We do not have a homelessness problem and never will. There are zero services in form of social safety nets for 50 miles in any direction. Therefore, no homeless population can exist without these. Homeless people might show up, but are quickly moved out of town to the east and west by major county deputies, fellow citizens, or the spoken hostile people. Or they realize there's no reason to then to exist in such a brutal, harsh environment, and they move along. This ordinance is a waste of time. We're working on a problem that doesn't even exist. If you want to waste time creating ordinances for public property that's harmful, eliminating and regulating what people do in the municipal enterprise zone to make money is a whole other thing. Commercial properties are there to make money, whether they be the old Blueberry Muffin Tavern being doomed into a pizza stack, or to bridge Creek Cafe, or the property that Tiger Town uses, or WCT. Mitchell has lots of RVC sites that the commercial district uses for the benefit of their commercial enterprise. Whether that be for employee housing or other purposes, it should remain legal to charge for RV sites on commercial land. The way this ordinance reads, anyone living in an RV could be subject to being considered homeless, including Steve Bond, Royanne Roberts, ODF employees behind the store, or people who help careina seasonally. This is once again a waste of time and should be shut down. Thank you for your consideration, Dave Salvage. They've got, you've got one of them there.
All right. We're doing our. Give that to the clerk, whatever.
Oh, okay. All right, thanks. Thank you, Ron.
Who's up next?
That's it. I didn't. Oh, Carrie.
Are you on the public comment? Did you sign up on your public comment?
No, I find I'm.
Yes.
Are you not going to let me talk?
You aren't late, no.
But I want to hear. So I.
You all. So I have two minutes.
Thank you. As most of you know me, I'm Carrie. Um, I'm here to offer support to two very important people of this town. We could not survive without these two people. One is our, our, our marshal. He's been here for 28, 25 years, and the other one is Carol. If he left, the town would be in shambles because nobody would know what to do. It's right there when they need.
Agree.
Or two, yeah, that's right. He's my level. Agree.
Very good.
Thank you. But I'm here to support them. Uh, they always support. Yeah. That's what I'm here for. I think we, as you see, offer to support them. Uh, they're going through a lot. They're, you know, this town is going through a lot, and I'm sorry the water's way it is. That's okay. We'll try. But we need to support the ones that take care of that. Thank you.
Thank you. So moving on from open public comment. Uh, correspondence favor PLT petition update.
I have four total petitions from the same letter that I read at the last meeting.
Bringing in action on that, or?
I'm just letting you know.
Date on. I think. At our next meeting, we'll address, uh, the concerns with their, with the petition being that there's only been a few of them turned in.
I, I did ask the chamber to be here.
Okay. We'll reach out to the chamber for our June meeting, for them to command and have that speed. Grant opportunities.
Just come, I think they're all in Salem at a meeting.
Oh.
Is what's going on. I think that's what's happening.
Thank you, Ken. Grant opportunities, updates, park recycling, Councilor Bourbon Bank, do you have an update?
Uh, they did get asked of me and told me that process is in due right now, but, uh, closing down for the remittance of everything. So it's when they get, uh, go through everybody's needs, because it was through everybody in the state of Oregon that they asked for, um, they'll.
Thank you. Oregon Parks Planning, local government grant update.
I applied.
Okay. FEMA update.
That's just on there.
Just so we're aware of it. We're still, Doug, you have anything to say about where we're at? Are we in, moving forward with? It appears that they're moving forward. Um, exceedingly slow, but moving forward. They were asking for some additional information from my correspondence with the Army Corps of Engineers regarding the jurisdiction of the channel, which really is the channel. And the Corps agreed that, yeah, we really don't think that we have any jurisdiction over that waterway. That information passed on to FEMA. FEMA said, gee, that sounds, that's kind of what we thought too, and it's, we were moving forward. That said, they seem to be moving forward for the past year and haven't actually seen any hard progress, because that's when the plans were turned into them. Um, a little over a year, but. So FEMA runs slow. I just heard today that there was some funding on a distinct event. They had some damage, and that their funds just gotten leased, so hopefully it's coming. Okay.
What is this? Is this you thinking about?
A lot of the four years ago.
Yeah. What?
It's going to improve the water coming down instead of very unbuildup recovery pond, and then that'll channel into a stream system stronger.
Except the side and also.
Um.
Next to the side one.
Picks up. And then do some other repairs up there, repair the gutter that's undermined in places.
Thank you, Doug. Items removed from consent agenda. We have. None. Okay, we are to the old business, vote on council attendance, action. The.
It's right before the monthly report.
I got it. So.
What page, please? Oh, um, it's right before your report.
It's very.
I'm on.
The whole one's in yellow, the one thing that was on.
Obviously, there's a couple that you don't need to. Continue.
So do we want to do them individual or do we blanket them? Uh, council wants to. What's in? I think it's more of a phone up than anything else that we. Um. When and if you get new council members. We're on the same page, the base record. Clear area. Council Bourbon Bank.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the treat that, um, that person's presented for attendance, I think.
And you would like to have them excused or anything?
It was just a truth.
They really want to be excused or anything. All of our back issues are kind of pains that we're at a a point of possibly more coming on board. We do amend the original, that will be there for a minute.
You could do one person.
Yeah, maybe do one person, it's a great.
One person is five ministers.
Thank you. So. You got to make a motion on which council we excuse their access to the absence before.
Let's start with Kenneth. We'll start at the end of the row. Dennis Ferguson.
You can make a motion to excuse the absence.
Excuse, excuse Mr. Ferguson's absence is.
Motion made by Council Bourbon Bank to excuse Council Ferguson's.
I'd like to second that motion to. Council.
Council Catmull is seconding the motion, open for discussion. No discussion, Council Bourbon Bank, how do you vote?
I.
Council Catmull. Council Ferguson, unable to vote. Thank you. So we are to, Council Catmull's absence.
Like to make a motion to, to excuse Counselor Catmull's absence. Like to make a motion to excuse Counselor Catmull's absences.
Thank you. Counsel Bourbon Backs made a motion to excuse Counsel Catmull's absences. Counsel Ferguson.
Second motion.
Counsel Ferguson, second motion to excuse Counsel Catmull's absences, open for discussion. No discussion, Counsel River Ban, how do you vote?
I.
Counsel Ferguson, how do you vote?
I.
Counsel Catmull, you're unable to vote. Counsel is approved, Counsel Catmull's absences. As big senators. And Counsel River Ban. You can't vote or make a motion. Yeah.
Counsel Ferguson. I'd like to make a motion to excuse Patricia Urbanic or excuse her absences, please.
Thank you.
Like second that motion to excuse.
Thank you, Sergeant made motion, Counsel Catmull second motion to excuse Counsel River Ban's absence. Open for discussion. There.
I pretty much did agree with all that, you finally had seven absences and that was that.
I believe you've been trying.
Well, you guys are going to let go of me because.
I don't worry.
Yeah, you didn't want to hear my medical reasons.
I.
Brother was in hospital dying.
I, I, no, excuse me. You had the opportunity and you decided to resign your position.
You need, you know better than that, please.
Uh.
And Kenneth?
Counsel Ferguson.
At the same time, this, except how many are in a row, then no communication to the same. Was, it's part of, was part of the issue.
So everybody with all these checks on them called every day, right?
Yes.
Every day?
Any, anytime I was not going to or not be here, yes, I called and made sure or left an email also.
Counsel River Ban.
Previous questions, sir.
Your promotion?
Yes.
Yeah. Any further discussion?
No, it's over.
Counsel Catmull, do you vote?
I.
Counsel Ferguson.
I.
Counsel River Ban, you cannot vote. Counsel is approved, Counsel River Ban's absence. Okay, new presentation from Doug Argo, our city engineer.
Mayor, Council, clerk, in the audience. I'm showing up basically to say hi. Haven't been here for a little while, I've been in communication with the mayor and the clerk periodically as needed. And had the opportunity to go look at the site that's, you know, maybe, maybe not going to be acquired, the fifteen hundred acres or so out here. Looks like that's got a lot of possibilities. Could be used for industrial ground, could be used for wastewater treatment plant, well site, recreation, camping. Could even partially be used as grazing for some of the areas that, you know, it's being used now. But there's lots of possibilities there and if you have the opportunity to get that plan, it seems like a good thing. But just urge you to try and get them to list all of the, the possible uses you can think of that the city might use, so that they don't get somehow excluded. And you get restricted to not be able to do it. The only other thing to comment on that's, we haven't already discussed, we discussed the FEMA project. There's a grant in process, we've got part of the funding and the rest of the funding from rural development, looks like it should come through pretty quickly. We're doing a study of the water system. And that study would look at the source, look at possible other sources, look at storage, could look at the coordination system that you have, the distribution system, and then options for how things might, might not need to be improved. And that would be brought back to the council, I mean, the process is fairly involved, we don't just sit back in our office and dream up things right now. We'll come out, we'll talk with Carol, we'll talk with the rest of the city, Water Board, and gather information and what, what do you know already and tell us what the issues are that you see. And then we'll go from there and we'll take, we'll look at the things on the ground, we'll look at everything we can, we'll evaluate that and come up with recommendations for that. And that's, process takes a little while. But there'll be some back and forth in there with the Water Board in particular, and assuming that the council will be updated regularly on that. That's where we're headed, but that hasn't kicked in yet. Any questions?
What other, yeah, some of us are new to you, I think. What other projects have you shepherded through that are similar to this? Like locally or in this area?
The closest one I've done is Fayetteville. We did a, an evaluation of their system a couple of years ago. And they're in the process of trying to get funding to do that project. Their issue isn't so much their fourth, because they've got that pretty well nailed down, they've got a well for backup and they've got a bring supply. And then they have new storage and a new drainage system. But over half of their system was on dead end lines. So it's kind of like the spokes of a wheel, but there's no ring around the outside connecting all of it, there's spoke. And that leads to reliability problems, water quality problems, you have to flush the lines a lot, the heat may get stagnant. And if you get a leak down here, you have to shut down the syst, that line, well, it shuts down all of these people, doesn't have a loop to feed back the other way. So that was one of their major issues, another one is some old concrete asbestos pipe. That there's issues with that. The known one is age right now, and there's a.
Thank you. Any other questions for Doug, our city engineer?
Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
I excuse myself, but a long night last year. Different.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Doug.
Do you think we missed the brochure? A little bit. This page.
It is page.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. Why? Okay, sorry about that. Okay, so we're back to our old business, request reimbursement of hotel accommodation for the clerk's work after training. The clerk was not going, I believe the clerk was not going to ask for reimbursement for the training, but for Counsel's advice, being that when Carol was offered the training, he was offered a motel room, we do for one and for the future the other. You cannot, I can offer one, something, not the other one, so. What would it be for, for night?
I, I think they're bringing back the invoice for approval for eighteen, it's Friday, or Sunday to Friday.
Six nine.
Do you know how exactly how much that is? It's one forty a week.
One forty a night?
Happy to bring the invoice to the next meeting.
One hundred eighty dollars. Counsel River Ban.
I make a motion that we go ahead and pay for his hotel accommodation for the clerk, for her training session.
The nine hundred eighty dollars?
Nine hundred eighty dollars, yes, sir.
Yeah.
And that includes all the taxes on that as well. I don't, but quiet, I would be happy to bring the invoice after I say with you about this. Then I think, oh, this thing, the dollar note, and we'll accept that when she presents the receipt.
So, yeah, the gym meeting. That fine?
I'll second that motion.
Okay. I don't think they're even motioning to table so June. Can Jake anything?
If you had. I'm gonna, what meeting it was for, I see you clarified it was a dual meeting.
Thank you. Approved brochure purchases and placement of posters. And within the packet, you're, you'll be a detailed amount for the brochures that we already had approved. And see where the placements will be, total dollar amount, this is all coming from our T L T funds.
May I win?
Yeah.
So the numbers that you guys approved, one of them was Plymouth Falls, and Plymouth Falls is not available, and so I thought Mo- Mo Falls would be a good second option, it sees, I think he said a million per year, something like that. And so he thought, he suggested that as well, but that's also why it's a, it's a little more expensive. And their kiosk where, if you see where it says like Oak Grove, I five poster, so those are the posters, and I feel like we kind of were not communicating very well about, there was two different items going on, one with brochures, one was taking that brochure, putting it on a poster that goes in the kiosk. And for the Mo- Mo Falls kiosk, the folks see this kiosk as they walk in, and usually that transpires into taking a brochure. So that's the idea behind the posters there, so they don't do a whole new design that you need to approve, they just reformat the brochure that you've already approved, and it's a one-time design fee of six hundred and ninety-one dollars. However, you probably, he said, well, virtually never have to reprint. If you do, it's pretty cheap, but they already have the design, we've worked with these folks before, whenever I was working with them for brochures. So there's two different items, one is brochure and then one is poster, so the brochure is where they actually go and place it, but then also taking that halftime up to Crater Lake. So that's why it will only be the five months instead of the twelve months, and so basically after we install this system, we're just paying monthly to have them restock or reprint brochures. It's a, a pain. And then the cost of the brochures at eleven thousand, so I figured that we could take two thousand of those locally for tourist, cities that are close to us, Primeville, I know the forestry center wants those, maybe like paleontology center, you know, condensate fossil spray, those kinds of things, so nine thousand of them to get started for distribution and then two thousand locally.
So it's a five hundred and eighty dollar charge monthly for them to restock on top of. It's sixty-eight hundred.
For all of those, but, great. So the, the poster is a monthly fee for, kind of like the billboard, you're occupying space. So they're not stocking anything on the poster portion.
You're just buying space.
They're just buying space, it's a monthly space, just like the billboard. The ones that are the, gonna be the restocking is gonna be the Oak Grove, Mount Hood, Mo- Mo Falls, all of the Travel Oregon Welcome Centers, which I think there's five, every entry point into Oregon, and then also Crater, like those are the ones that are restocking. There?
Is there a quick question on the buy, on the buy all? Yes, on the buy all, obviously that's a discount if you go with the entire program, is that correct?
When you, when you purchase this, you get a thirty-five percent discount.
So it's the whole package gets you the buy all, which is saving you a few thousand dollars. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for pointing that, I forgot that, yes, it's thirty-five percent off.
Counsel River Ban.
Yeah, is the total cost done at sixty-three, thirty-eight, eighty then?
Yes.
Let's see.
Yeah. Plus sixty-niney. Double entry and then.
Percentage job?
My boy.
Yeah. Sixty-nine.
Oh, you're the prepayment discount, we got eight percent.
Well, I haven't, no, I haven't emailed it, and I've talked to him quite a few times, and he said that this program will get you fifty-five percent off, I'm, I don't know why, or sorry, thirty-five percent off, I'm not sure why it's not showing in the.
No, you got, your gross fee, like, if I, can I comment on that?
Yeah.
Gross fee, let's say for Oak Grove southbound, the poster is twenty-one hundred dollars, the discounted fee is thirteen sixty-five, makes sense?
Oh, I see, the buy all, yeah.
So post-discount is part of the break.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Does Mitchell really benefit?
We need a motion for.
Oh, no, yeah. Fifty. Yeah.
There's no sense in talking about some of the complusion and entertainment. The council needs to make a motion, approve a motion, open for discussion.
Of the board that.
Then we have a discussion, then council.
So this conversation is between the council and the clerk and you? Right now, someone?
Yeah.
And why is Pat interrupting?
Yes, he didn't make a comment.
Make one comment, Barry.
I have a lot of comments.
All right. Moving forward, that has knowledge of distributing of brochure.
I'm sorry, what?
That has knowledge of the distribution, who that they're advertising the person here.
Okay.
So, I'm not saying that nobody else, we just need to make a motion, get the motion approved, then we can open up the public comment.
Okay.
Counsel Catmull.
I'd like to.
You know, so. Corky place.
Oh, yeah.
Shows. Okay.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the to purchase the brochures and the posters. And have them. Re-stock.
At the price it's given on the.
Yes, if the price is given on the invoice. What is the price?
Six thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars. Can we wait?
There's the twelve hundred and fifty eight dollar printing fee on the other side and we will. Mac it. But this is just for them to stock and place. Then there's also the six hundred and ninety one dollar design fee. And the. Eight thousand two hundred and eighty seven dollars and eighty cents.
Begin that figure please.
Eight thousand two hundred and eighty seven dollars and eighty cents.
I'd like to rescind my prior motion and make a new motion. For the printing of and placing of the brochures and the restocking. At the price of eight thousand.
Two hundred.
Two hundred and eighty dollars.
Eighty seven or eighty cents.
And eighty cents.
Thank you, Council of Riverbank.
I'd like to take it that, please.
Motion made by Council of Catmull, signed by Council of Riverbank, open for discussion. Kathy.
Um. My phone is spending as much. The sites are far enough away. I don't think he's gonna draw that many people into Mitchell. From the, but when these base sites are, it's a lot of money. Um, council works for the citizen, but. Just saying as a citizen, I do not agree with it. If anybody wants to raise their hand as a citizen and raise their hand that they do not do spending this much, they're walking in with their hand.
I don't think it benefits. Mitchell that much.
Well, it's. We've had work sessions on. How to spend our T L T money.
Oh, I bet you have.
And. Said on its. Conclusion that. The directors have been done in the past. We do have a billboard in Ben for the city of Mitchell. We had one last year in Madras.
You get just as much business in Mitchell as if they weren't there.
I have a question, is it one time?
Randy, go ahead.
Broken down from the beginning and then.
There is a monthly fee involved.
Five hundred and sixty three dollars. That's how much our city would be paying for this advertisement.
For them to continue to distribute. The brochures, make sure they're stocked in all these locations.
Hotels and the city camping. I mean, are they, are A, are they behind it? B, are they losing money and that's why we need these? I mean, I guess I don't understand why we need these.
Advertising.
Right, I know, but what is the city getting out of it? But yeah, but there's.
Reverend to be across the country, you have a left in your own. I I don't know.
Those people's businesses, but if they're not suffering and you're you're limiting camping even further. Wanting to limit camping and we have plenty of people that know to come here and camp. I mean, it just feels like an unnecessary cost. What else could we be spending the money on, I guess? You can't spend it on.
With our T L T funds, there's very, very limited. Things we can spend it on.
For example.
What we can spend money.
And that's it? That's the only thing?
Madam Court, can you address that or? It's basically that there.
There are programs, there are things that other cities do that. We have been told by our attorney that is a very narrow way to spend them. Other city attorneys are willing to defend very different things and so. We are trying to work with the chamber for what programs they would like to do with the with the funds. But it it's advertising, the the money that tourists put into this pot. Then gets redistributed seventy percent to advertising and then thirty percent goes to city funds. We can spend how how we would, but seventy percent of those funds have to be spent on advertising in some way.
And they give back to the city what they put out for them.
Hang on, hang on, please.
Yeah, two things. The first one is, has anyone here seen what the brochure is gonna look like for paying for design? Are we paying up front for the design? So the council already, okay.
Was there any?
Answer your question, the council approved the design of the brochure.
Yeah, I heard that. So the the other thing I would just learn is like. You know, it's twenty twenty three, we're talking about billboards, you know, internet of the thing and YouTube ads, Google ads, Facebook ads, or a lot of people in. A lot of that.
No, thank you. Kathy.
Think the billboards in Madison, Ben, that are somewhat local to the area are trying to spend the money on. These, none of these sites are really local. I don't pretend to draw that many people in for this kind of money. That's just my opinion. I'm sorry, where did we get the money?
Randy.
Money to spend on advertising.
The money is collected from state order for the transient lodging packs. The transient lodging packs are paid. From hotels, Airbnb, things like that. The state. Is collecting that money for us. We get the money quarterly from them. It's money that you don't sit on. You can't like just sit on for five years. It's not advisable here. The reason why it is set up is set for tourism because they want you to use that money to increase your tourism. In speaking with the park ranger at. That goes to paleontology building and. Painted Hills, they're noticing a thirty five percent decrease in tourism. Over the last two years. Did COVID have something to do with it? We don't know. They said they've noticed thirty five, they have a counter, they count vehicles, they have thirty five percent less touring. I know, it comes from the lodging establishment. The state collects it, the state gives it to. There's only basically one way that we can spend it that our attorney does not want to. Going to a different area. There's other cities in other ways, but their city. That's for a different subject. I didn't stay on past care.
So the businesses that host tourists. Collect a tax from those tourists. That money is legally required to be spent on advertising. The fund, do do we know what's in that fund right now?
We do.
Sorry, I probably should have read that.
It's very. But go ahead, I will be right with you.
So. I understand the concerns about this seems very far away. It seems distant, seems like it won't reach. But we're not talking about a one to one, one to one quantifiable. Situation.
Thirteen thousand nine hundred and fifty one dollars and twenty cents. We just spent six thousand dollars on the billboard.
So since. Over the last, what, six years? The city has collected almost. What, thirty thousand dollars in lodging tax? So those lodging establishments have been bringing that money in. Thirty percent of that money goes to the city budget. It seems reasonable that the city would make every effort to help those businesses continue to boost their bottom line. Because it it turns around and it pays the city dividends. The the thing about the distance of these, I understand your point. I, you know, I have been skeptical too. But travelers are travelers and they may not come here this year. But you get something in their mind and they may schedule it next year. It's not quantifiable and I hate that. I absolutely hate it. But it is the way that it works. It's qualitative. It makes people say, hmm, I want to go out there and then, yes, to Alex's point. We should be backing it up with Google ads and Facebook ads so that when somebody searches for the painted hills because they saw the brochure. They go directly to our lodging pay. Now, I understand that, you know, this may sound like a conflict of interest because we host travelers. But the reality is that. These businesses have done their work and they have collected money for the city. It's only fair that the city honors that obligation.
A quick follow up question on that.
Krista? Didn't have time to look it up. Forty five of your payroll comes out of one account, forty five percent of another account.
We're not talking about payroll, we can't.
Okay, no, but that's. Okay, yes, forty five percent of your payroll comes out of tourism. We gotta look at that as. Five percent, okay, thank you.
Okay, so I'm curious, the three companies in town, are they actually paying to the person fun for taxes on their rooms?
There's more than three.
How many are there?
Therapy.
I six, seven, maybe Airbnb during.
Have the companies that are backed up, started paying them?
Is what?
Have the companies that are doing backup, that have been dodging that tax of agent pay?
We don't know.
Well, you should know, you're the mayor.
The state collects the money. The manager should. If the if there is, the state's not collecting the money from a business. The state will go up to that business.
All right, legal, but certainly that how the city consulted with the people that are paying into this. Has their opinion been, no way, no, okay. Because every business I talk to that has anything to do with the sales tax or the inventory, the print tax, the logging tax. Wants to move all money away from the city of Mitchell and go into the condominium, chamber farms. So I don't know why the city wants to spend money rather than disalligator to the chamber.
As we stated prior. We have as a chamber, we asked them for. Moving their budget, we asked them for a budget. They didn't produce a budget for it. The council has agreed unanimously at the time not to turn over any money to change common chamber. Okay. That that's where we stand on the chamber commerce, the chamber money. And and our city attorney has also advised us that. Because we're liable for that money, how they spend it. If they spend it. Against the way we can spend it, we're liable to get in trouble from the state. If the businesses ever want to come to a meeting and they can come to any meeting they want to.
I would just like to point out that the city does pay into the T L T funds through camping and so we are a partner at the table as well.
The city does pay itself for the T L T funding. Any further discussion? I believe Council of Catmull, you made the. You made the motion, Council of Riverbank, please second your motion. No further discussion. Council of Riverbank, have your vote.
Aye.
Council of Catmull.
Aye.
Council Ferguson.
Aye.
Council has approved the spending of the funds for. Printing and. Distribution of. The. Brochures that were previously. For.
The one that, you know, how much still for what? What type of group?
For the brochure, eighty.
Eighty seven dollars and maybe cents.
New business, we're gonna get back there. So approved job description. There was. We need to update our job description. We needed to. Clean up some of the job descriptions. There is a idea to unite the water master maintenance meter reader and one job. I'm not sure how we want to move forward with that. Have you had a discussion in C I S? I was busy, I was unable to.
Uh, yeah, they suggested that we. Wait until next month to do that. They want me to get back. With them.
Motion to table?
I will get back together. I'll pay when you sign it, be updated on.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so unite city administration, city corporate, it's a job.
Excuse me, we have a motion to table.
Oh. Uh, Council of Riverbank made a motion to table the. Job description for water master maintenance meter reader and one job. Counsel Ferguson, second motion, motion made by Council of Riverbank, second by Council Ferguson, open for discussion. Kathy.
Um, council member, you get, you're a citizen here. Um, I don't think fixing the water master and maintenance is a good idea. Because water master may get so busy in his job, he's not gonna be able to. Follow and get catch up on his maintenance job. We've had that problem, you know, he spends so much time at the spring. They can't do the maintenance, but if you call into one job description. Also, the water master and meter reader, I could see joining that, but. Water master, meter reader come out of the water account. The maintenance comes out of the dental fund and if you mix it all in one, it's gonna be really, really. Hard to decipher or put scissors to decipher, who's paint, you know, what? How much maintenance to put in, how much water map to put in, blah, blah, blah. I think it needs, personally, I think it needs to be separated. And videos.
Good, all right, Alex.
How about you let them all get their. Damn. Okay, yeah, so like, um. So I was reading ORS at Black Knight for other reasons and I didn't know this, that this was gonna go on today, but I did. There's an ORS that states that you cannot redefine a job definition. For an employee of a municipality while they're still employed. You can also not change their pay.
Anybody else?
I go for this in the next conference.
Anybody else? Anything?
I mean, you know, in the past, we have combined the two before and we ran into lots of issues. That's why we separated it. And I think it's a good idea to keep it separate.
Come on, running into those issues right now.
We've been there, done that.
Randy.
Yeah, my question was going to be, um, that puts a lot on him, doesn't it? I mean, anyway. And I was gonna say that about the tourism too, because more people, more trash, I already see trash on the road and he can't possibly keep up with with, I mean, I would think. With the amount we, I assume, we pay him, like, that's, that's not enough, you know what I mean? So is that, is the issue that we can't fill the positions? And you can't find someone else to do it? I guess those are my my kinds of questions. I'm just wondering. You know, that just seems like a lot. I mean, I don't have all the details.
I believe a good reason why we're on table is the discussions, or we have a better idea of how we should move. No, maintenance too is a part time, just feeling part time. Well, water master is like twenty hours a month or something, forty hours. Forty hours a month, meter readers, eight hours a month, maintenance is.
Yeah, that, I mean, that's more.
So the idea, we can take it on, or, well, we couldn't get anybody, but if they say it makes it more attractive to have. One person for all three jobs, it's really not enough during the winter months, truly keep somebody. On board for twenty hours a month, you gotta do, I mean, tell them those, I know, you gotta, you know, go through the, the red board two times a day. So it's just, we're, we're trying to figure out the best approach on how to.
And the state can't help with that, like, offset that or not help out at all.
Alex.
Yeah, just from the outside looking in, it goes a lot like, I thought it'd be inconsolable to report someone else.
Thank, thank you. So we had a motion to table, any further discussion? Alex, another hour person has to ask you later, please. Brandy, if you have a question, can you please raise your hand? Thank you, Brandy. We'll get to that after we finish. Thank you. Sorry, I made the motion, no.
Kathy made a motion to table, councillor Burbank made a motion to table.
Councillor Burbank made a motion to table councillor.
Ferguson.
Ferguson seconded. No further discussion, councillor Burbank, have you vote?
Aye.
Councillor Catmull?
Aye.
Councillor Ferguson?
Aye.
Thank you, council. We will table the discussion for job description for water master maintenance meter reader. Was that the intent? As one item or?
I was asked to present it on the agenda as one item if you don't want to entertain it, that's the thing. They're, they're all separate positions.
Council, we're, you want to table the water, city minister, city clerk is one job, or do you want to entertain that?
Are we here?
Or to unite the city administrator and city clerk is one job? Did we entertain that or do we want to table that along with water master position? Councillor Ferguson?
I, I'd say table it along with the water master position.
Councillor Catmull?
I'd like to second that motion table.
Motion made by councillor, by councillor Catmull, table, open for discussion.
I'd just like to make a comment, um. I'd like to make a comment that if any of you are concerned about either one of these, we can attend the next meeting.
Any further discussion? Comment.
Oh, yeah, I get.
Brandy?
Yes.
Clean that, please, I think it's. Brandy?
Okay, so are you saying that, um, the position is now being done by her, she's doing both positions currently and then what you're?
I've heard, under, not to interrupt you, but under her city clerk job description, she's actually doing a city administrator. Because she is doing, um, land acquisitions, property, um, there's just a whole. Array of things that falls outside the scope of a clerk. So by combining, making, changing the title from city clerk to city administrator, that way it involves everything that is done. So moving forward, if she's not in her position, you're not falsifying your job application or your job. Description where you're putting it out there, because our job description is not nearly give. Half of what the clerk is, was you. Alex, one more time, please.
Oh, I, I think, I think I might.
Yeah, but I don't, I don't need those.
They want me?
I don't know. Brandy or Ethan?
Uh, were you offering? And right now, is it, is it open right now as two separate positions? It's just that she has to do it?
There's no, there's no job opening. We're trying to clean up a bunch of things that are out there.
Oh, okay, so she, but, but so she is doing jobs, kind of, that's what you're kind of saying.
More than, more than two jobs.
Okay.
Any other city has three people there that she does. As one.
Okay.
City spray, city, if you refer to city spray, city apostle, any other city.
Uh, I don't know about those cities. I live here, but I just, I was confused about it because. I mean, it, it doesn't make any sense with what you're saying, that she's already doing the job, you're just trying to make it now look like.
Make it, yes. And for the future of, if the job has to come open, it's more clear of what you're going to be doing, right? You get hired, oh, and by the way, you have to do all of it.
That makes sense, I guess, okay.
Yeah, I agree, that makes sense, but I hope that'll buy an encouragement, because when Chris admitted job, he was volunteering for the, and you and Chris have both said that you would not take on those positions that's paid jobs, that I am trying to consolidate the job title, so I can.
I don't.
As volunteer, yeah, why not? Why not? This is not a paid position. You just said, why not, acquisition as a very personal, as part of the.
Everything. Part of the job that.
Morning order.
Kathy, one more.
Okay, so what you want to do is make the city administrator and city clerk one job. Not separate job. Are you asking for? City administration position to include city clerk, clerk duty? Are you, okay, but you're not looking for another job opening, another, which is one big job, we find a company, you know, she's already doing the same.
Doing everything that a normal city administrator slash clerk would do. Again, it's cleaning up a lot of things that need to be cleaned up. That way, if the job does ever become available again, you know what you're getting into, right? Then getting put into a position and, you know, all of a sudden, you know, you got parcel land, parcel divides that would not fall under a court.
Correct, okay, I understand, okay.
So, but she's hired for clerk, she took all the other stuff on herself.
Like what? I don't understand what.
Nobody else.
What?
I mean, that was a city clerk, had to do all these other.
Yes, thank you.
No, 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 I'm sorry. They were supposed to be done, but they weren't done. That's why this, we're, the city as a whole are so behind, behind on reporting. That we don't have, um.
Yes, I agree, that's not right.
Well. That we're.
Well.
We're years behind on this. Say, Lynn.
Well, in other words, you're just going to put one name over the whole thing?
Yeah, we're not creating.
One over the blanket, the whole thing?
Yeah.
And are you going to be wanting more hours and more pay as it?
I, yes, would fall under the discussion. I, at this point, I don't know. Alex, one more.
Yeah, so, uh, one year and seven months, one year and six months, and you said we're years behind. Are we sure we want this person to do that job?
We're years behind when she took the job. Sorry, I may misspoke and wasn't clear where you could understand.
We're years, not understand. You're something dumb, what?
Reporting.
Reporting what?
He can explain a lot better than I can. I believe she has her hand in it. Man, the court.
I, I would ask the council to please, um, go ahead and approve that there is really any reason to table it, so. We, we all know that this is what I'm already doing, so tabling it does absolutely nothing, and we've had it in this little discussion, and just to rehash it again, so if, um, it pleased the council, if, um, the motion could possibly be rescinded, because. We know, that's what I'm already doing.
Councillor Catmull?
I'd like to make a motion to rescind the first motion to table it and address it now.
Councillor Burbank?
I second that.
Councillor Catmull has made the motion to rescind the motion of tabling. The administrator clerk into one job, taken by councillor Burbank. Open for discussion. Alright, Kathy.
Um, just with the understanding it does not necessarily mean more hours, does not necessarily mean more pay. I just want, you know, it may or may not, but I just want that clarified that, you know, in this moment, still on the jobs, there's no guarantee of more hours, no more pay at this one.
They.
Now, do you have a, um, way that would be suggested for all the new hours, I mean, how many hours?
I don't think there's a paying increase involved.
So it'd be no more hours and no more expenses, I mean, for the blanket, even the whole thing, though. That's what we're gonna vote on?
Just the council has made a motion for it.
I was just trying to clarify this stuff.
Alex, yeah, the website is not working, but I just, uh, asked the council, um, he. One statute that says that you're not allowed to define a new role or, or change, uh, your personal role or, like, any decision point or existence rule that's fully included, may have any.
Any further?
Nothing more, I bet.
Any further discussion? Councillor Burbank, have you vote?
Aye.
Councillor Catmull?
Aye.
Councillor Ferguson?
Aye.
Council has passed three eyes to three open seats to unite city administrator and clerk as one job.
Um, it was a motion to rescind from tabling, we need a new motion to.
Okay, so council has, um, approved to rescind the motion for tabling, motion. Right? Councillor Burbank?
I make a motion to accept the combined. Name for Chris's job.
City administrator or city clerk?
Yeah.
Thank you. Councillor, or, yeah, councillor Catmull?
I'd like to second that motion.
Councillor Burbank made a motion, councillor Catmull seconded motion to unite administrator and clerk as one job. Open for comment. No comment, councillor Burbank, have you vote?
Aye.
Councillor Catmull?
Aye.
Councillor Ferguson?
Aye.
Council is approved to unite city administrator and clerk as one job. Thank you, council. Um, we're here. Um, approved office space for water master slash maintenance position at city hall. And I believe at our work session, we had discussed creating a space where Carol has room for paperwork, doing paperwork, storing paperwork. So in the unfortunate event, if something happens to Carol, we do know where, um, things are. So. What do we have?
There have been many ideas floated. I'm really presenting a space for the council to entertain that. It, it would be nice to have some collaboration, but I, I feel like we've talked about a fair amount. Either reallocating money to, um, do in addition, reorganizing city hall space and asking, you know, E M S to share office space. Or we, we need some sort of office space somewhere.
Councillor Burbank?
How much of those spaces used? Throughout the week or the month?
To E M S portion of city hall, um, it's, it's usually depending on a run, and it's usually depending on certification, so when certification comes around, they do more training, things like that, um. Could, could we provide a space down here to train? I, I would think so. I would, maybe we can have some storage space here where they can.
There are kind of storage, you know, air.
Well, I just mean that there's storage right there. I mean, people are storing things, there's storage upstairs, I mean, could we create, I don't know. I know that records are really important. I know that E M S training is really important. And we have to address it, it's.
So, why, why don't we take and, and put a lock filing cabinet in the fire chief's office? And yet, yeah, you can have a key to the fire, fire chief's office, you can use the office in there as needed, through the bit, there's the whole nine yards, you can use anytime you need to use it. If you have a locked filing cabinet, the very reason why you can't lock his records, though, nobody has access to him, but him and whoever else that city needs to have. I don't use it that much. So you would be willing to offer a desk and filing cabinet?
Well, I don't have a filing cabinet you can use. First, it's a filing cabinet with a lock, none, none of mine have, um, I don't have the next one that has lock, have a lock on it, so. The, the reason why you can't use, you know, the desktop and whole nine yards, where you can write on and fill those forms out and file it in the filing cabinet as needed and.
Thank you. Thank you, your lady.
Yeah, I would suggest, um, something to think about, is using existing possibilities and not creating like a new office building or a new. Lean to or new space to have this off, I think we need to consider finding a place that's already there that could be used, not creating a new space.
Thank. So, yeah, you hit that for me.
Um, yeah, the records that, I don't, not sure what kind of records you want me to start picking, and records are supposed to be in the city office. Okay. Along, along with all the other records that are supposed to be held within that city office, or at ten years.
The city office is maxed out for space.
Then that other space should be opened up and put a window in there for the party.
The fire department is in that space.
But they can't use it without having a window in it that's been.
It was approved last year.
Alex just gives the fire department that some of their space.
And we don't have any reduction right now.
Who could do that other room?
Well, that you, that you have, that part is not workable, because it has no window. So you could do an occupancy, that's a, a window, no?
It was approved last year to put a window in, a thousand eighty-eight dollars.
A thousand eighty-eight dollars?
Yep.
I think we need to get that done prior to. The possibility of having that, because the. We are running out of space for, for the clerk storage, for all the storage of records that you can cut. Right now, we have numerous boxes upstairs that. They are secure, but they're not secured to where the state could say they're secure. They're under a locking key, but. That's what else we have to, we need more storage, like you said, whether it's that be kept for ten years, we don't have space. We are. We're, we're running out of space, we have to pick up. So the only thing we could use the fire department office for right now is storage, I do believe. But I think we need to definitely address the window situation and, um. Come up with, um, a way to secure records or create more state or. Record storage. Because we don't even have room down here at the old courthouse. Across the street there, we're maxed out there. Did you have your hand up, or somebody, oh, did you have your hand up?
Oh, it's my question, we have the, I think, I don't know how much they're paying us for the rent on the city hall, I mean, it would be a good place just to keep, uh, records.
Yeah.
I mean, if you need a little desk, it would be no problem. There, we're only getting a hundred bucks a month or whatever for, yeah.
So. I talked to Jerabaya about that. We do have the jail portion to keep our records in, but I have to coordinate with them to get the record. Which is a little bit problematic. Um, they said if we raised the rent, it would be very detrimental to them, and if we took the office space, it would be detrimental to them. Um, because of the, they.
Um, because of the, they're using the breathalyzer there, and if they didn't have that, they would have to automatically drive to, um, another jail for a breathalyzer.
They just told me what they said, Dan.
Aye.
I wonder how many times they use that.
Once is one to me.
Blank, I don't, I don't think it's ridiculous that we get a hundred dollars a month for a billion net process fee here that, that the clerk in the city could use for a city clerk's office, a city hall basically. All they have to do is put a bathroom in there, and, and we're doing it because, because we might get one breathalyzer a year. You know, or, or, I mean, they don't use it as much as, as what they like to let out, they do, I haven't seen them in a long time, actually, they used to use it for, for court when they have traffic violations, people are coming for court, they haven't done that in years, for a long time either, that I've seen.
I, I agree, I, I think that would be a perfect fit for a city hall.
And then, and then they'll be winding up, they'll kind of find a city hall.
Right, and I, I've said it's just, I don't, I don't know if we're under a contract. County, it's a year.
We'll need to go to the attorney to see how to stop that contract, but I think that a conversation needs to be had with the sheriff's department for you.
I mean, really, they could go to the, you know, Minnesota and use the fire chief's office for a breathalyzer.
They're welcome to do it anytime.
They just spend more time in town.
All right, so, um, I will, I will start a conversation with Matt, Mike Smith, to see just to let him know where we're at, because we are out of space, that would be a perfect area for a city hall office. Oh, oh, hey, Dan.
Okay, um, just, just as an aside, the school just purchased a, a twenty-foot Conex container and had it placed for storage, I don't know if that meets some of our storage requirements and free up space, but that was fifty-nine hundred dollars plus two hundred and fifty dollars delivery fee from, uh, SMAP. So, if, if the discussion gets to the point that there needs to, that it's really about just getting things out of the spaces so that there's storage, the Conex is, I mean, yes, it's not free, but it's watertight, it's bug tight, and it's something that we can use as, so. Recent example, twenty foot, you can seat up at the school, we just, we just put it in place. And it has a man, it has a man door, I think it's eight feet, yeah, so it's twenty feet long, eight feet wide, it's got a man door on one end and then double doors on the other.
Okay, um, Alex.
I, I think, I think the council has approved the phrase that they got to go to the chair.
They don't have to approve any of the.
I mean, it's up for motion. They actually, they have to approve the motion.
Prove you.
The motion.
There's no motion.
We never got to a motion, because Glenn had planned, I just started with that. Correct, correct, thank you, nothing.
Um, personally, I think it would be a good idea, even with what I get it now, to have your record storage in a place where if there's a fire at a cit, at the city hall, your records don't get burned up. You know, I think, you know, having a place that's not capable of an electrical fire or some kind of, you know, and my concern is, even at the city hall, we're not, now, if there's ever a fire up there, electrical fire, whatever causes it, that our records are gonna burn up.
We take that chance wherever, wherever it's gonna be stored, except in a company.
This, this is why the city purchases.
Yeah, you're right.
This is why the city purchases fireproof file cabinet and things like that, that's got to that to go.
Ma'am, clerk.
Many of the cities are going digital, we are getting rid of paper, but we have to have a process in place before we could even be digital, so we have, we, we have to catch up to actual good record keeping practices, and then we can go digital. So that is, the goal is to be digital, so that you don't have to worry about storage and paying for storage and things like that.
Sorry, it's going. Means that we don't have to keep any more paper records ever, because digital is subject to viruses and people hacking and changing records, which I personally already have a problem with in general. So I'm just wondering, if you guys plan to go that way, does that mean you're just not gonna keep like paper record?
So.
I mean, I think it's, I, I have a problem with it anyways, I, I question it, that's the way you're gonna move.
We, we're, we need they, all of our ordinances, all of our things are online, are viewable online, you cut down on paper, you cut down on a lot of stuff. It's a lot easier to be able to go on a website to see something.
It's also a lot easier to change that.
But I mean, like during digital, you're reducing use of paper, and I did, did it to care, don't, then the city clerk bring the hard drive home or it's a backup hard drive, you know, I thought, but former clerk.
I don't know.
Do you want to put the vote on that, something that, that the clerks showed on, if they decide to go digital, or is it a personal choice that you guys make?
There's my name, Jared, that's up there before I, before.
Okay.
So, we are I guess we need to table that till we get clarification from somebody else, Mike, about how to, or from our city attorney, we need to find a way to contact them.
I would suggest have the conversation with Mike and see, you know, you don't want to put the sheriff's office out, that's definitely the last thing that we want to do. And, but also, like, he understands, they have, their records are stored everywhere as well, they understand the space is an issue for them, so.
Right, so we don't need to.
No, just, just start the conversation and, um, when, when you're ready, we can go ahead and see, you know, if the council wants to move forward with getting a hold of the attorney, I'm sorry, there's a lot of backtalk, it's making me very just.
Background, if you have a question or comment, please raise your hand.
Brian.
Brian. Yeah. Thank you. Okay, so we are to resignation slash dismissal. I created the date, but Carol told me that he wanted to, he asked me to put the watermaster position up for, um, to declare, he wanted to resign his watermaster position upon the city, I am a new watermaster. Um, again, Patty, you were in a conversation with CIS pertaining to this. What was her advice?
Uh, she asked us to ask Mr. Corbin whether he did actually resign.
I did not officially resign or resign.
Yet, or?
Yeah, did not officially resign.
Do you have a date on that?
Carol did state to me he was going to stay on until he did fill his position, so I don't know. And you might want me to stay on until that person, at least have the month.
What, um, what I was advised today from CIS was that if you were choosing to continue on, but you're going to leave, you have to give the council a date when you're gonna depart. Not, not on a contingency, that it will be hired, someone else hired and them trained. As we proceed further one way or the other, that, that's what we thought that informed of.
I agree.
So, do you have a date for that, sir?
Um, I would say, well, I, I don't wanna say right now, because I don't know if you're just gonna combine my job with the jobs, and then just because I take, I wanna have a water master position, then I don't have a job. Do you want to change? Because you talked about combining all three, if I quit the watermaster position, then basically I'm out of the job.
But, so then you've already resigned the other jobs, that I'm, I'm really confused, and this is, this is not open for people to be, this is between the watermaster and the council and the mayor and the clerk, okay, it's closed right now. No, it's not, but it's not been opened up for comments. So that's why everybody's hands and waving and wanting to step up and start making comments here, this is where we're having some issues.
So, can I request, uh, this be, um, going through or be moved till next month?
Ma'am, clerk.
So I can't advertise a job for a resignation, it doesn't happen either, you're resigning, excuse me, I can see, excuse me, excuse me.
I know.
The option to be. I can't post a job opening and hire somebody for him to train if he's not resigning, so.
I know, I know, that's, that's what.
So it's either.
That's why, that, that's why my question to you, sir, was do you have a date? Because the city cannot proceed further until you either say you're not gonna resign, or you aren't going to resign, and you're gonna give us a date so that we can go ahead and post for a job description.
So what you want me to do is give you a date to resign the watermaster position?
I don't want to give, I don't want that. You stated that you were gonna resign. And in order for us to go forward, sir, according to CIS, they asked me to please, if this was your choice, to please give a date.
What Carol.
I don't care what.
What Carol stated to me was that he would like the job to be posted and open. And he would stay on until the position was filled. So, again, I did not have the conversation.
Exactly, and we did have the conversation.
How Carol came to me with that.
So how to be perceived here, that's what I would. Then how are we going to be able to proceed further, sir, and post a job description with somebody when they either are not gonna know a higher date? Or when the city doesn't know when you're gonna be able to go ahead and resign, so that the new person hiring you on will actually be able to not just be in training, sir, but actually go ahead and take over those responsibilities.
Counselor Ferguson, you had your hand up?
Uh, I was just I, I do have a question on particularly, uh, talking to the fellow you're talking to, the CIS, um, if maybe I, I don't quite understand, and what is, so Carol's stating that he's, he's willing to stay on, set the position up open, so say, I, he Glenn came into town tomorrow, then signed up in position, and then say we accepted it, and then Carol would start training. What, what really is the difference then, I mean, I guess I don't understand why it wouldn't be okay for that situation.
Because with, as was explained to me, sir, today, what she says, it would, and it was a she, she said that if we hired on a new person to go ahead and take this on, but then Carol chooses to not resign, then where is the city left with two people hired on for the same position or positions? And the new person could then turn around and sue the city for false advertisement for a job, where they went and went through all the proceedings needed to get this job, and then then the person that is having this job says, no, he doesn't want to resign. That's where we're sitting, that's where we're stuck at here, that's why at the, came here to this meeting tonight, asked me if that's what you, she asked me to ask you there, are you going to resign, you said you were gonna eventually resign. Then she said, then ask him, please, what date? That's it.
Um, if, if he rescinds any resignations, then he keeps that position, so I guess technically, next month, he could declare a resignation with a date. Isn't that kind of what, is the email saying that he declares resignation or not, every states, in the open meeting, he did not resign? Then.
May I provide the position? And I was on that tele, I heard that telephone call there, there as well. The we that, the, he asked for a position for a, a notice to be put out for that. But then you have to go to put out.
People in the back.
Now we are expecting people to respond to this. How, how are you gonna handle that, if you go in a.
Then sue, could you please?
Hey, that's the problem, I, I literally, I can hear them.
Well, could you step out, maybe?
None of us want being fired, so fired, you weren't setting the fire, and we were being this school, nobody was starting the fire, I mean, I was one. Trying to get the. He's a good man. And we can stand up and tell them, you got, he stayed, you got.
Good night, Ron.
So, I kind of get now, but we can't really post a job opening until we know where the watermaster's position is.
But that's already been told, but you didn't answer one of the questions.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I know, it's, um, all right. Uh, so, but I gave you a date, and then the date goes around next month, and because you didn't, uh, combine the three jobs today, you combine them next month, and then I'm out of the job.
Yeah, that's what you asked.
I didn't do that.
And the individual, why is there so much comments from the peanut gallery when it's not been opened up?
My apologies. My apologies, don't worry.
City, city folks.
I was. If there is no order, of course, I mean.
Straight from.
From, yeah, so sorry, y'all.
So, getting back on the subject. Counselor Catmull.
So how can we, I mean, we don't, if we post the opening, we don't even know who's gonna apply, who's gonna, when that position will be filled, if he wants him. How long it will take him to train, I mean, we can't determine all that right this moment.
Right.
Or how, you know, how many people are gonna respond to it, we don't know. Or when they can start, or there's so many. That's not.
Point of order. Carol did ask for this item to be tabled at the council's discretion. I don't know, give their hand up first. No, I like to get up. Once, once the motion is made, and seconded. Once a motion is made and. Once a motion is made and seconded, then we open it up for discussion.
Okay.
I I let I let it get a little bit out of control, it's my fault, I apologize, won't happen again.
Okay.
Any more out first, maybe in here, you'll be asked to leave. Has anybody applied? Carol. Job yet? Have we had any applications for water master position yet?
I have had interest, but I did have not received an application and I have now posted it. So I don't know what you propose to do about that, it's in the paper. I don't, I I don't know if we're just getting hung up on the word resignation, but if you ask me to post a job, it's in the paper, you're planning on leaving. I I don't really understand what what we're dating here by by not having a date, it's not that you guys are trying to force them out of job, you're trying to make it look more attractive to somebody? That it's kind of seem like.
It's all three jobs aren't posted together.
It was a dust, it was just a discussion.
The water master position had been posted. So you give like a like three months, your resignation is up in three months. How about two? You want to. You want your position to your.
So I can't post the job for two months, but we've already posted the job.
So July eighteenth is two months. So your resignation as of tonight will become effective July eighteenth.
Can I ask what date the closing is for the job you've already posted, Krista?
It's in a closing, I didn't have a closing date.
Okay, the one at the post office that you posted before for water master closed on May fifteenth, which was yesterday. Or, yeah, yesterday. I just wondered, you have to put a closing on your job position opening for the city, correct?
So we will extend it.
We will extend it.
Extend the closing date till. I think the idea behind putting closing days is get people more interested on a quicker basis than open ended saying, you know, we're looking for somebody.
Well, if it's if it's open for a month, people are not going to apply, the shorter the time it gets people inspired to hurry up.
That's why we have a two week window generally for a hiring window. Okay. Oh, so now the council has to.
If he has come up with a date, then we are able to go ahead and proceed. So I make a motion that we accept the resignation of water master Carol Urban. And his end date will be seven eighteen twenty-three, according to him.
I'm taking a motion.
For Verba Bank made a motion, county person seconded motion to accept Carol's resignation effective July eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. Any just or open for. Randy.
My question is, if you guys go ahead and combine this position? And then he says, okay, well, I don't want to lose all my jobs. Does he get to take that resignation away? Is that within his legal right? Because I don't think it's fair for you guys to combine the job next month when it's open for, you know, it's open for a vote. That's that's not fair to him.
Right.
Because that's clearly not what he wants. So I just, my question is legally, if he resigned from water master? You know, I mean, what are the legal ramifications for him when that time comes that you may combine those jobs? You guys have an answer?
Hang on, that's kind of special at this point, so as of right now, I don't have an answer unless.
It was before he resigned. It while we were cleaning house, it was before he resigned, and so that's what I would ask to put on here, before he resigned.
But that doesn't really answer my question.
It does, because it was cleaning up, it was healthy.
So basically, Carol just resigned, like, or you informed me you wanted the position of the like two weeks ago? And about two weeks ago. Now, pick a weed in the moment because I'd be down with water.
Once we're open for discussion on this, would it make sense that the resignation of in would include a contingency that Carol stays on on a month by month basis? So he can, he can file a resignation, but stay on a month by month contract at which would 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 clean up the concern about training somebody? And not have to be quite so minded. Like, we're not, we're not closing the door on Carol being our water master and losing all that knowledge or losing the backup. If the council approves a contingency that if someone is not hired, that he stays on a month, but I know he doesn't want to do it. God bless you, I get it. But at least it leaves the door open with a contingency that it allows him to train.
And that was my question and your answer. I'll know tomorrow after I speak with the AI.
Okay, can there be emails and how, I don't know how this works because sometimes I don't get emails.
I don't think.
There will be a draft set next.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, um, I got, I want counsel and all involved to remember how hard it was for Krista to go into her job with no training. I don't want to see that happen to another group. Like, training has to be allowed.
If I I have have no qualms whatsoever with terrible training, he knows the most at this point in time, and I have no problem with it, and like Pat said, that may be a viable option that.
Well, I was just wanting to, if I can clarify, so he's basically wanting to resign on just the water master and keep the maintenance set and stuff. But if we go and do, if we round table it until next meeting, to combine that, could it be on contingency? Totally combined, he has the opportunity to so he don't lose or get fired as the maintenance president?
I believe what, I believe what what's going to take place, we need more clarity on on the discussion that I was involved in just saying. I would, I need to get on the same. Me and Kennedy talked about what she, I was busy with water and giving data to her and whatnot, so. Unfortunately, I was unable to participate in that phone call conversation, I did get a follow up email from, believe she spoke to. Again, there isn't so much contact via email that I'd rather have a conversation, maybe another conversation with Patty and the FBI is leading about how to do it, what to do and 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 then it will be addressed at our next company, maybe that's been tabled.
Yeah, and it is.
So we had motion seconded to accept Carol's resignation as of July eighteen, twenty twenty-three. And for a discussion. No for a discussion, Council Verba Bank, can you go?
Aye.
Counselor, that one.
Aye.
Counselor first.
Aye.
Counselors approved, accepting Charles' red. July eighteen, twenty twenty-three. Moving forward. Fire chief was sent a letter of the council wanted his presence at this meeting. He was given the option of having it under executive session or in an open meeting. I believe we did not get a, you were sending certified letter. We did not get a response. But.
Reason you didn't, you didn't get a response was because the times that I had available to go to the office, either she was closed or she was sick or I was busy doing other things, so that's why you didn't get anything back, I would like to have an open, open meeting, that's fine.
So you got the letter, you recognized. So you're running out of your this heard in an open meeting.
Yeah.
Thanks. I know there's been a lack of communication on the fire chief part from myself as the mayor. I've sent numerous emails to him, no response. Of course, I sent numerous emails, no response. In conversation with the fire chief in person, he always wants to respond to me in person. I tell him I need your response via email. I'm out of the dozen or so emails I've sent out, I have not got a single response back. I believe the city attorney drafted a letter of things that need to be done. And as best my knowledge, I don't think that. I've never seen a a letter from the attorney, you know, nothing to one of them, and it was a certified letter, like, it was in your box, you picked up. I mean, a quarter of a five letter?
No.
I never received anything other than that. Okay, well, you're ready, he said, he said, I did too, yeah, I let her in your.
That way, that way you send them certified letters, that way you know that what's going to be picked up or not.
You were counselor when it happened and you've got communication of the counselor.
And it was in your paper box, that you.
Never seen it, no.
Like I said, read and play the.
I know, but the thing is, I was given an email address, it's all work. I've tried to use an email address, but I was told not to use my personal email address anymore, yet a couple, a couple weeks ago, or last couple weeks, I've gotten emails from, a couple emails, your information emails from the city. So why am I getting those in my personal box? I'm not supposed to use my personal email box for that. And but I got an email address that I was supposed to use for the fire department. And I've never had been able to get it to work, and I've been frustrated, so so frustrated with the way things are going, but as far as as every time I try to do something, it seems like, like, well, twice when I got the truck. I I I I got the truck, and I'm scolded for it, because maybe, because I didn't know the, I didn't know the procedures that was in place, because they never were in the past. So so I got the truck, I operated our truck by twenty years straight, you know, but it just seems like every step of the way, I'm getting, I'm getting slammed bam for whatever I do. And, you know, I have, I have a telephone and you guys, because this is what called me, that's me calling or emailing you. If you haven't, if if you didn't, if you didn't receive an email from me, I have a phone number, you didn't have a phone call me when it came time to flush the water meters. Or not the water meters, but the hydrants. You told me for that, and I didn't respond, and I, and I, I went out and flushed the water, water hydrant.
The reason my emails are used, so we have to record that communication.
I understand that.
They get you to flush hydrants, they're not, it was a need to do right away.
I understand that, but at the same time, when you didn't have, if you haven't heard anything from me, why don't you call them, pick them up, is there a problem?
You told me that you were receiving my emails, you just were not answering.
No, I didn't, I was.
When you were at the coffee shop, I said, are you getting my emails? You're like, yeah, I just haven't responded.
I got, well, I said, I got the one email that we were talking about that particular day. You kept telling, you keep telling me not to use my personal email box for email box, your emails.
Have you emailed us, have you talked to the city clerk about?
No, I, no, I haven't, because I've been frustrated, to be honest with you, I've been frustrated. Every, every step of the way, I go in and it doesn't matter what I do, I'm I'm blacked out, so, or or the rules change. Or new rules get made out of, out of nowhere.
You know, I don't believe.
I've been, I've been, I've been a reliable, a reliable and 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 fourth time volunteer for this community for twenty-five freaking years. And I've never had any problems up until, up until December of two thousand twenty-one, all of a sudden, I'm having trouble. And I'm just frustrated. You want, you want to reach your goals at every opportunity that you get? You know, I'm just, I don't know what else to do. I don't, I don't want to revise my position, because I've worked hard for it, I'm proud of my fire department. I've upgraded the equipment because I'm proud of my fire department, I want to take care of our, of our community.
And then, so as, as far as training records.
I have all the training records, you have all the training records that that I sent her last time, maybe you don't have any for the last couple of months, but.
A year.
Uh, been less than a year.
Nope, one year. Actually, thirteen months.
Well, President Kline have her maintenance records, they have her maintenance contract.
You don't have any.
I don't, I don't get anything from them, it all goes to the city of Mitchell.
No, we get a bill.
Well, I told them to direct any records of any kind to the city of Mitchell, as per requested from, from you guys in the past.
Counsel, do you have questions, comments? This actually has an executive session, but in an open session, council person.
That, you know, that's outstanding, you know, you're volunteer and everything for, for the city for twenty-eight years. But at the same time, you, you still have to keep involving them, you still have to keep educating in yourself, and you probably, you know, you go up in the fire department, go up there and assist in a mess. I mean, it's absolutely cluttered in there.
Well, there's, there's much city stuff added in the real life, so I just.
See my lips are moving? Thank you. So all your, so all your equipment and stuff, when you walk in there and all your turnouts and all your stuff is slung around, there's, and I'm saying, so if we had a state staff fire chief right now coming in and inspect your hall, you'd have no problems of taking your, all of your stuff and.
He was here two weeks ago.
I know he was.
And he said, look great, the, the bags of turnout, you just got, not, not even two meetings ago, we hadn't had a chance to go through them and put them away.
And then all your hoses.
Don't tell me to vote the volume.
No, I did not, just check them out and let you finish. So if the hoses, all your hoses, all your. Is everything up to date on all your hoses?
Every tennis is today, about the date of any other fire department we were counting.
Because it comes back to the issue where it's, it's hard to win, the mayor is requesting information and on your records and there's, there's, there's not.
Well, I don't tell you, I, I have all the records I, I, that I, all the training records I have, the maintenance records come from, come, go from around here. They, they do our maintenance contract, I don't get any records for maintenance.
You don't do any Echelon One maintenance?
We don't, we don't, we don't, we don't change oil, we don't do any of that.
No, Ech, Echelon One, that means checking the fluids, keeping maintenance. Checklist, like, lots a month, you, yeah, we check the air pressure, the tires as we, we, oh, oh, okay.
Well, there was on my computer, but I don't know if all the records are there anymore, because when all the, when it's not turned off several months ago.
That, that's, that's what I, so that's where it's.
Is what it is. I know.
So right now, if we were to request a training records, where are those training records?
Training records are in the fire hall.
In your office.
My office.
So if we were up there right now, you'd be able to produce whatever last year of training.
Until about the last, because all the training we've been doing lately has been, been on our own, it's been at our, at our house, because, because of the, of the use of the, of the training hall. We don't, we don't use the training hall anymore, so. We use, when we go, when we do structure, structure truck training, we do, we go to the firewall, but other than that we do a lot of one line training.
And you have records of that? I don't know.
So there is a little concern for me there, so you guys aren't physically training?
We haven't been able to, it's been winter time, you don't take trucks out and pour water out in winter.
I understand that, and but there's.
Counsel Verba Bank.
When do you have your meetings, sir?
We usually have them twice a month.
And?
On Sunday.
What Sunday?
Every other Sunday, every second Sunday, second and fourth Sunday is enough, depends on what month it is. Sometimes, sometimes we postpone, want to tell the next, tell the next meeting or something else.
Where do you post those meetings?
We also, in this, on a public. We don't post them, they're not a public meeting. It's a training meeting, they, they, they've never been posted for the twenty-five years I've been on the department, it's never been posted.
That's where a lot of things can happen, because you're in sorrow for the trouble.
And, and they are.
I don't know that.
They are to be public, as I've asked several times. When, um, and this is why I'm asking is, since there's so few of you. If you, my thoughts were if you had open meetings or you put postings on there, that they would actually be younger people, go ahead and, and. And be encouraged to join the fire department.
There's posters down now asking for volunteers, and been there for years, and nobody, nobody comes and contacts anybody.
Where?
At the book club. I've seen one there today, it was on the book club.
Yeah.
Golden board.
Do you have anything posted on the reader board, maybe, like?
Reader board, for, for the school? I think the city, I think the city has some volunteers for Hamilton.
No, for fire two.
For fire two?
There, there was, at least at one.
I'm willing to do whatever I need to do as far as, as far as the cleanup part of it, I mean. Knowledge is, knowledge is king. I mean, if I don't know something, then, then I guess, um, yeah, I'm a little bit, little bit. Bit liable for, for not asking, but at the same time. So, so is the city for not inquiring. You know what I mean, here?
No. I know who I am. You were, you were, you were, you were answering to the city.
What?
You answered to the city.
Over to the council.
Okay, the council. Actually, technically, if you want to get into the mayor, does oversee the EMS.
That's fine.
There's been, there's been. Oh, sorry, there's been several attempts for a year.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that, but. I've been, I was on council just a year ago, and I, I know it affected.
But there's been no records produced for a year.
There has been records produced for years.
Where are they?
I've got, put them in her, in her box in the, in the training room. I have no access to, to her, to put them on her desk. There's a gate going across there.
I'm sorry, can I resume? You got copies?
Uh, yeah, copies of them.
I'll give you copies, all the copies you want, okay? So you do have records?
Yeah, I have, I told you I have records.
To produce them.
I can produce records. I don't have, I don't have a problem with, with the city knowing what's going on as far as training.
Well, it's not.
It's not.
It's, it's. It's been brought to my attention by, um. I inadvertently had a lengthy discussion with. Vance up at school today, he got ahold of me, and he is highly concerned of. Our fire rating.
Our fire rating has been high forever. It's not because the ravers are on the fire department.
He said that it would have, it was a stick to jump to it.
No, it's never been a stick.
That's incorrect.
Okay, Madam Clerk?
The, when CIS comes every year and they discuss your coverage, because that was told to me too, so I asked her. And I asked her if there was any new maps that changed the rating, and there is new maps that changes the rating, and a part of it is based off of your water system, and part of it is. Based off your fire department, it's, it's not all the fire department raising the rates, and so. There's, there is a gossip going around that it is the fire department, and that is incorrect, it's the way that they change their maps and how the CIS is reading them. However, there are things that they could do to help lower the rating, and there are things that we, as a city for our water, could do to help the rating.
Well. I, I had the guy here last fall, I don't know who he was here, he, he brought me a, he sent me a, a water head test in equipment. To detect our water pressure, so we could do a rating for the city. And at, at which time we weren't able to do it, because it was starting to get winter time, and it takes, it takes the water map for hand fire. One of the fire department personnel to go do the test, and Sterling didn't have the time at the time to complete it, he was. Frankly, he denied, but, and so. So it didn't, it's a water test, you know, it can get done, but we still had a manager, and he still gave us a number, and it wasn't, it never has been a six. It's always been an eight to a ten, but for the twenty years that I've been here.
I don't think it's ever been a ten.
It's a, it's a nine right now.
We're at a nine right now.
Yes. And we've been at a nine for a while.
Okay, so for clarification, the discussion I had with the principal of school. He must have got, he must have got caught up in the former.
But there is a, there is a list of things that I've been asking the council to look at, there was. I think you have a copy of the demands that were sent in the certified letter that we, we must all. Work together to accomplish the risk compliance plan, and, um. I, I, I am happy to do whatever needs to be done to help. Assist the fire department in records or setting up whatever it is that they, whatever it is that they need. But I think that that's really important is to get some of that CIS stuff checked off, because we've now triggered. A lot of the wrong people in a lot of different areas, that's not.
I'm will, I'm willing to do whatever, whatever it takes. I'm even willing to work with Kenneth if it's easy.
So then you and your fire department will be at the meeting.
I can speak for the firefighters, because it's a volunteer job, you can't really require firefighters to, to, or volunteers to. Unless you don't want them, I mean.
But under this circumstance, I think it is, there's states that all staff, all personnel, all volunteers for the city. They'll be at the meeting on Thursday. They will be, if they're not going to be there, then. Yeah, yeah.
So you're gonna tell them two days before a meeting, that, that there's to be a meeting.
He emailed you too.
Yes.
A couple of times.
Yeah.
I was fired a few years ago. And our part, part of this is a nineteen twenty-nine Peter Pursh fire truck. That was housed right out here in this hall. We had to cut the steel rack off from it, because the, the door was too low. To get out unless you duck, and if you had a tall guy and he was on that pretty first, you were going to tear your head off, if you didn't duck down and you could see. And it should have been, it, it, it should have been. Well. Because I'm like Glenn, we didn't have any volunteer firefighters. The only time you got anybody to come to a fire was when. There was a fire, and they didn't know what to do, they need to stand back. I had a fire, I asked his fire chief, it was the Bob Hubbard house. I went up there by myself, I put the fire out, it was a food fire, and I had some of the. Unvolunteers come after me. They grabbed some axes and shovels, and they went and beaten on this guy, and they just totally destroyed the house after I had the fire. I said, I am not going to put up with this anymore, the liability is gonna kill me. But I want to say something about Glenn, he's got some fire trucks, some fire equipment, and when you have to beg, borrow. Hopefully he didn't steal any of it. Equipment to make your fire truck, and you can't get anybody to volunteer to help you. I think he's done one hell of a job with what he has.
Fire chief around the volunteer fire department, there's, there's only three of you, you don't have a life anymore. All right, you don't, you don't go to town for, for the day and, and go out for dinner or a movie, or, or anything like that, you. You go to town to hurt, get hurt, get hurt, and get back, because you're responsible for somebody's house. Maybe get on fire, and I don't think, I don't know, I don't think you need to go, well, maybe Steve does, I don't think everybody realizes that. I, you know? But all this liability and one person's hat. What do you think somebody's gonna do? I mean, I do the best I can. If anybody can do any better, they can have it, for all I care anymore, I mean, I'm just trying to get back to where the end falls.
It's, you're not being regular.
I know, Steve.
The CIS has someone who basically came in.
I want to have a meeting with ladies, like, like the thing on the, in the certified letter I got, that I'm supposed to have a, a meeting with the ladies from CIS, I want to have that.
It's a gentleman.
Or whatever it is.
I will contact, and we will have that meeting.
I'm just, I'm frustrated.
Well, it all. You're not, you're not continuing to say. About the liability that we may be.
I do understand. Do you have things like that, or, counsel, at every turn, I come in, I come try to take care of something. And I get told information, so I go and take, and try to do the information, and it doesn't work. So then I, so then I try to go back down, and stuff is mixed around, and I, I get other stories, and then. I, I, I got out of junior high school back in nineteen eighty-one, and, and that's what it feels like, I'm, I'm playing with it, because. There's all these rules and all these regulations, and, you know what I mean?
It's the big rule.
I know, I just. But yet, I'm, I'm, I'm disrespected by not having the authority to say something, that's fine, you can smile all you want, Kenneth.
So.
Anyway, whatever you guys want to do, I'm, I'm with it.
You, you do understand that there are state regulations.
I'm completely compliant with the state regulations. Okay, well. I like, yeah, so we think for quick. On the, the email situation that you're trying to portray, the part of contacting the fire chief and the email number. Is the exact same employee that was using Terry, when Terry's email got changed by the city and then deleted. Where Terry was being manipulated and controlled by certain people in the community, killing her lives, about what's happening, and then saying, you can get the email. They didn't make any decisions during council meetings, and that happened, and I reported that, and I had to call the, a complaint against, uh, against the city on that. And the person that perpetrated that, good for them, and second, um, second. Um, Kenneth, uh, go direct to the council for a second. I, when Kenneth first moved here, he said, oh, I have to go on the volunteer fire department, and I said, great. And then he said, but I only have one leg, and I said, dude, you can drive, bro, you can do whatever you need to do to help, we need people. And he said, but I have a dishonorable discharge from the Marines for selling drugs to me. I said, dude, alright.
We got way up.
I covered it, but you went way up base by now.
Thank you. For the record, do you want to help her hand breathe?
Um, Joanna, go ahead.
I just wanted to make a, a statement that. In order to have a school district, we have to have a fire department, so please keep that in mind with these discussions. That's all.
We're totally aware of that, we're just. The council needed questions answered, because. We're not getting, we weren't getting zero response. No reports in the last two months, you haven't been, me, so I haven't gotten, I haven't gotten the agenda, and I didn't know that was required for the fire chief to get to me. It's in the job description, I've never seen a job description. I don't, I'm honestly, I'm honestly, I've never seen an actual job description of the fire chief, or.
But you're aware that when Greg was chief, he was there.
He wasn't at every meeting, he made three meetings in ten years, Steve.
Alright.
So. So, so what about, so, so the fire chief has to be at every, at every council meeting, what about the EMS program, does he have to be at every meeting?
I don't know if it's in his job description.
Well, if it, if it isn't, it's good. What's good for one is good for the other. How about the ordinance officer, uh, 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 do you want to be your first?
I'm not arguing that fact, but you're trying to say just to somebody else in here, you need to be here. Well, you need to be responsible for your own. The ordinance officer does, it matters with the fire chief does. Exactly, so we don't need to compare. We're discussing the fire chief's position and how we can get the fire chief to. Get back in communication, if you aren't getting your emails, contact your clerk, we've had other issues with the emails. Contact your clerk, get it figured out. Answer your emails. Emails need to be answered, if, if I send you an email, or the clerk sends you an email. There's a reason why that email is being sent out unless it's for, if I have your information on it. Because, again, we're, you may not agree with what, where we're at right now and how we're moving forward, because it wasn't done that way twenty years ago. That's where we're so far behind, is because it wasn't being done, now all of a sudden. We are trying to get everything up to where we need to be, and we're getting this. We're getting a pushback from you.
I'm not giving you any pushback.
Yes, you are. And I'm getting, I'm getting really, really tired of the he said, she said back and forth. We need, we, I, I'm sorry, you may not agree with the moving forward of. Updating records, being in contact, answering emails, saying that that, it needs to be done.
That's fine, I don't have a problem with that, I already told you that.
Okay, well, all I can do is take you for your word, because I have numerous emails that I can go, say, no response. I told you in person, when you're trying to answer my email in person, I think, Glenn, I need you to respond to that email. Okay, I will, never got an email back.
I'll try and do better, all I can do.
So my suggestion would be to work with CIS with.
Safety coordinator.
Safety coordinator, come up with a game plan, he may come out and do an inspection.
Why?
Because the last inspection that the guy came out two weeks ago, you said he did not, in, he, he was looking for. He did not inspect your equipment.
I didn't inspect the equipment.
So it was an inspection of the fire department, it was an inspection of.
The city building.
The city buildings.
Exactly.
So. I believe Counselperson directed a question to you, and he said, nope, he gave you, oh, good.
No, I, what I, what I meant by that, well, well, he, everyone said there was nothing blocking the doors, and something blocking the.
Right, but you have not had a, a state fire marshal, or Mike Smith, or anybody, or Max Smith from Bangor come out. And check, inspect your equipment.
I haven't.
Or if you have proper hose on there, if your hose is out, and it's, like, damaged, pressure tested.
Do we have money for new hoses, we need new hoses?
That's, that's not the issue, you can pressure test your hoses.
We do pressure test, but we put a lot of trucks and take them outside when we get a chance to, and not.
Okay, do you have a record of pressure testing hoses?
No, I don't.
Okay, that's where, that's where we are behind.
Okay, that's fine.
And I know, I understand, it's a volunteer position, I totally understand it, I was on the department. Years myself, I understand it's a dedicated job, you feel like you're tied to that position. Okay, it's kind of the same thing as, you know, being the mayor, I feel bad when I go out of town, because. You know, what if something happens, because it's, you know, just like the house fire up here, I was the last one to know. Until I get a phone call, you know, hey, we got water, where we getting water, you know, and again. You as a fire chief never supplied the city with a report on what happened at that fire.
I, I supplied the, I supplied the city with the report, I thought I was required, I thought I was required to.
So, as, as a city, though, we don't know what happened. I'm getting so many stories from so many different people. That are, are not in your. So I just want you to be aware that it's just not easy. It's not, it's not, again, it's, it's moving forward. We, we need to move forward, we need to get the proper papers done for the acquisition of your equipment. That was done a year ago, that never got the proper papers, but to the clerk. We need to get all that stuff cut up, so what I propose to do is. What was that that I wrote?
The, the list of demands with the certified letter, and, and. Are you able to complete the list of demands?
Yeah, in, in, in amount of time, yeah, I can.
What is your timeline for that?
You, you, on the thing, it said July something, would have said on the thing, but it has to be done by July, so I knew that.
And your, and what your, your department will attend all the required trainings?
I, I, I'll tell them, I'll tell them to, but I can't, I can't force them, I mean, I can't call a time and bring them down here, and I.
That's gonna mean, though, that if you don't, we could lose our city insurance.
That's just the condition of what had transpired a couple months ago, when CIS came in and did our compliance.
That's fine, but like, but, but how did they expect me to, to get people against their will to come to a meeting?
That's, that's not, that's. Beyond our, all you can do is tell them if they don't show up, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, they have, you have to comply.
If they don't comply, we're. If they don't comply, we're. They don't comply with the training, then that's CIS's discretion is how we move forward in the council. The council will make a record, CIS will make recommendations. We get, as a council, if we don't get our training done, we could get our insurance pulled, period. And that's not anything that, you know, we wanted to do, it was brought to us. So.
I'll do the best I can do, all I can do.
Okay, so what I mean, I'd suggest that I'll get Mark, I, I'll, I'll email Mark, I'll see if he can come over. And once I hear from him, I will reach out to you, get a meeting set and make sure it's workable for all three of us.
Okay.
I know we're, we're all busy, I totally understand it, I'm not trying to put anybody out, but again, we just need to.
Is Chris gonna be in the office tomorrow? Can I come in and, and try to get my email to work? Yeah, if I can get the emails and I can respond to email, all of them.
That would be great.
I don't have a team with time, I got, I got something to do in the morning and I, it'd probably be an early afternoon.
Are you gonna just call, give her a call sometime when you have a, a time set?
Yeah.
That'd be great. Council, any other questions for moving forward with the fire chief? Councillor Verberbank.
I'm wondering if you would be interested in coordinating with the city and, and doing like spray does with their ambulance thing and have a spaghetti dinner or something like that.
We've, we've done.
I know, we have talked, we've talked about this before, but. Yeah, the one that has to decide when, you know, and the date.
Well, I would have to get hold of the EMS and I'm gonna be the EMS and the fire, and the city and the fire department.
Yes.
That'd be great.
I'd like to see more people on both.
We've, we've done fundraisers like that with the past with the EMS.
Good, cuz I wanna see that happen as an older person and having only three people on.
For a long, for a long time.
You know, that's just, I, I I epitomize, I'm, I'm so sorry that that's all that there is, but you know, we really need more on there, you know, for you.
I'd like to have finally.
You can actually go shopping for the day instead of feel like you have to break neck to get home.
When I first came here, Patty, um, I, I was one of fifteen firefighters on the fire department and I, I started the very first speech I moved here. And so, and went and made every, every training, every, every call I could, so I was working in Primal time, actually Redmond at the time. And so, and in the last ten years, I haven't missed a call. So that, and which was way before I became chief, so.
I, I may catch up, we need to move forward cuz we're, we're still got quite a bit to go, so. I know you're, you're saying one second. So I'll be in touch with you, but if you wanna get your, the email working, make sure you get it all working, that'd be great. Kathy, real quick, please.
Um, so you're getting all the information, all the up to date, all the reports today, I think, for the ambulance service and regular vehicles.
We're not discussing the ambulance right now.
I think it needs to be like a council, it needs to be fair. Ambulance, EMS, fire, they all need to be equal.
Okay, thank you, Randy, you have your hand up?
Feels like we all just, you know, like, I, I guess we weren't, maybe it's just me, but at first I was like, why are we discussing this? And then it became clear that he had done something that upset the council or wasn't doing what he was supposed to do. But next time, maybe we make that a little more clear, cuz all you guys said was that he, we were gonna talk, I didn't know what we were talking about, so. Secondly, i- is there, maybe if he can't do all the paperwork and stuff, which is a huge pain in the butt, maybe we have a volunteer. You know what I mean, just a suggestion, maybe there's a volunteer that could help you with that stuff, I hate that kind of stuff too, but just saying, maybe that's something, I don't know, I don't know, that sounds like a lot, but. So, and my, my third question is, and, and I, I only bring this up because you mentioned your rating and you mentioned the insurance stuff. How come some of the money that the city has can't go back to that alarm system that we used to have? That wakes people up and says, hey, there's a fire in this tiny canyon that we live in?
The, the system that we have for doing that, um, was, was what they call tone base, which takes a pager to go into it. And that's, they don't have that system anymore, you can't buy parts for that system, you can buy a, a new interface, it's thousands of dollars to make it go off all by itself when, when nine one one calls it and says, hey, there's a fire or there's a.
That could be the city or that the fire department has to be, or the state?
That'd be something the city would have to talk about.
That maybe. That system was turned off years ago and numerous people that lived around the area were complaining every time we went off at two o'clock in the morning. So that's why, that's why you have the reverse nine one one like you have today with the water.
You know what I mean, there are people who have minutes in certain areas of this canyon, which is that off.
Okay, 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 one more thing.
I'm sorry, I'm just trying to say something. What I'm trying to say is, that seems like it would be a better, a big priority, especially if you're gonna say that, you know what I mean, the insurance is higher, whatever, like why wouldn't that lower the insurance and wouldn't, and this is a question that we asked before. I mean, I don't care about people's complaints, too bad, I don't wanna burn alive, you know what I mean?
That's.
So.
Nobody wants anybody to burn alive, that, that system is antique, it's outdated.
So.
That's, that's why they have their reverse nine one one as soon as a, a call comes in for a fire. The house fire up here, I was, I was in Madras, I got a nine one one alert. That Hamilton Heights was to evacuate.
I did not get that alert.
Okay, but if you.
Um, get ahold of me and we'll figure it out.
Well, no, these, those things are not as helpful as an alarm, is what I'm saying. And I hear you saying that it's outdated, I'm just saying that seems like it would be a better system to alert people, cuz some people are hard of hearing, some people are old, some people can't get to the phone, or they only use their cellphone.
Probably was.
So.
Okay, we, we can check the alarm, we can maybe look into a different alert system.
You, you actually voted to not use that system, period, last year.
Okay.
So it can never be brought up again, I'm sorry, I just don't understand.
I, 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 I do believe it's so antique that you were, you're gonna be spending, throwing bad money after you. It's a waste of money, pretty much.
In your opinion.
That's my. That's my, and, and I sit here, that's my opinion, that it may be cheaper to look into a different type of alert system. But then again, we're gonna have people complaining, so.
I mean, it's safety.
So what I, Randy, what I suggest is get ahold of the clerk, get involved in the bridge.
Bridge.
Everbridge, Fire, Fire River Bridge. They can do, we can do a test to make sure who gets it, who doesn't get it, and then if you don't get it, we can further address the situation. It's, so Steve.
Ron.
Yeah.
This is Ron.
Seems like you're saying that you have to rent here.
I think like some burner phones.
We have never.
I, I think some like burner phones and that, um, maybe don't, and so Mitch had said today, I asked him, you know, he's the one that puts it out. So he says, if you're registered. I, I don't know if, um, if it's just residents with a, I, I, I will need to find out exactly what that is and if you have, if you're not registered, how to register because that's what he said to me, so a hundred and forty-four or seven people got it.
Forty-four words written up today, I got one and I've never joined Everbridge.
Right, but I think there's a way to do it because if your phones are too old or you've got a landline or somehow you're not registered, we, we can call dispatch and find out.
Perfect, cuz we, we have neighbors up on high street that didn't get the alert today either. I let them know that there's a water.
We, we were, oh, alright.
But when you're through with this.
We will definitely get more information because, um, about the Everbridge.
For, with batteries, I could, I could go in there and push the button and manually set the alarm off, it was not that bad of a situation.
Um, again, we're trying to progress to.
I know.
So, um. The alarm was great, but like, right down to our house, you don't hear it so well, down in the south, wouldn't hear it. So we'll get more information on Everbridge and whatever it is. And for.
Um, I, I need to go back to the approving the job description, just so I understand. You guys did approve the job description, so those are the ones that I can put out for the water master position, the facility operator, you, you have approved those job descriptions, not just a table. The.
I will talk to all of you guys tomorrow, I don't have more time to wait, bye.
The, the uniting of, you tabled the uniting of those?
Yes.
Correct.
Yes.
Right, right, but approving those descriptions. Did we approve all of those descriptions by, cuz you're tabling those, those ones, but so you didn't technically approve the job descriptions?
Correct, we did not.
So if, if it wouldn't be too much trouble, could we just for compliance reasons?
To approve the job descriptions that were put in the packet?
Yeah.
Council. So if you're, but, what the council is asking for is to, to approve, like, you're asking for, she, I had time step was to approve the updated job description for water master maintenance and, but not to unite them.
Not to unite them and, and the city administrator, city clerk position, yeah, those are all new, new job descriptions. No, no, those aren't, they were, you know. And, and neither is the, um, playground equipment, because there was like ten pages, well, you can see, there was just so much paper in it, I didn't, I didn't put playground equipment or. A lot of people. A lot of people, and I've been sending away too much paper, so I'm trying to, it helps when these guys have computers that we look at, but, um, you know, the more, I, it's like twelve hundred dollars and I ordered them.
It should be.
No, I can't, I can't, and, um, there'll be one individual.
I wanna get a check, so I need to talk to somebody, like, I thought we were talking about you, not the whole fire department and what you guys were all doing, I thought it was a day. So, yeah, we're not getting a. Yeah, we're already trying to be, be damn hours early for this shit. Yeah, wow, we're always gonna get our shit tonight, aren't we?
Apparently.
Yeah, apparently we are. Whatever this is, man, I'm just not getting any of this. I don't get any of this shit. I really commend you guys for actually even doing this job. I mean, you tend to remain to even be on the board, honestly, any and all of you that ever tried it or don't try it. Cuz this is all. Who wants to be next? You need to approve the job. All I need, really, please, is for you to sign this while you get to meet for April. That's all I really need.
Okay, but we have an agenda to go through, I'm sorry to state this.
Well, I didn't know, I thought we talked about his, um.
Right, but we.
Recruitment and it ended up you guys talking about all the equipment and everything else instead of getting.
Right, normally that would have to be session.
What?
Normally that discussion we just had would have happened in a second session, Glenn asked for it to be in an open session. So unfortunately, things have taken a lot longer than what they should. I didn't. So going back to job descriptions, councillor Verberbank.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the, um, water master, maintenance, meter reader, um, position one, and the city administrator sitting clerk job description as presented.
Thank you. The job descriptions have been updated, basically. We got tabled as uniting the, the.
There's no second.
Oh. Uh, councillor Ferguson.
I'd like to second that, hopefully.
Motion made by councillor Verberbank, signed by councillor Ferguson to accept job descriptions, updated job descriptions and step four. Over for discussion.
Uh, I am formally requesting an email, which those job descriptions will, when they are updated.
Been filling out a record to your request.
Thank you. Okay, for discussion. Councillor Verberbank, have you, but.
Hi.
Councillor Kepel.
Hi.
Councillor Ferguson.
Hi.
Councillor's approved, the updated job script is put forward. Three eyes, three open seats.
I did make the change on the new one, by the way.
Okay.
Perfect. Okay, we're at, um, maintenance two position. Do you have the same letter, you didn't turn it down, you asked when, um, Parker's gonna be in the office, I told you when she's gonna be there.
Okay, really like I said, I'm not here to answer questions, I'm not here to, after you guys have terminated me, go and terminate me. I would just like to assign this, so I can get paid for April's check, and then I would like that within four days, cuz I'm being terminated. So, do you guys have four days? Yeah, I missed my meeting, so therefore I terminated that, so my paperwork said, if you guys wanna read it anyways, I would like to be terminated and I need my check to be forwarded.
So you're resigning?
No, I'm being terminated.
Councillor has not made a decision.
Okay. What does my letter say?
That you may be. That you may be.
But I did not make the May eighth meeting, therefore it said I was gonna be terminated if I did not.
My, I said reading.
No, I accept that, you guys, you know, I'm saying that, I accept that. I just wanna get paid for April, because I have not been able to meet with you at the office. I don't care what the reason is, I'm not judging why you're not there during the hours or whatever, what I'm trying to meet you guys. I had explained to you that I would like a copy of everything before I turned in my paperwork for this termination. You didn't even offer to come up during office hours and it should have been open to give me a copy of anything, so I could turn in my paperwork. So that's why I did not turn in my paperwork. And Krista, my gosh, you guys, this is the problem with this council, is everybody here?
No, you need to shut up, you need to shut up, no, you need to shut up, no, y'all just need to shut up.
You're like, I suck at this job, I don't want nothing, I didn't get this job, no more, terminate me.
So.
Terminate me. Please terminate me. Yes, you know, you even questioned that I didn't get turned in Aprils, because I don't even know what day to turn in anything, you guys. You guys really, my advice to you, the next person for maintenance to you really needs an orientation. Really, really need an orientation, so will I get my check tomorrow or not?
Out of my control, I roll.
It's not out of your guys' control, if I'm being frank with what my papers say, because I missed my May eighth meeting with you. It said I was gonna be terminated.
The, the council needs to.
What is, why are you guys?
I don't know what school I am, you know.
I know, I don't, you, it's really honestly, I don't either, kids, I just came here to get terminated and to get my check signed. That's it. That's it, and you don't know what's going on either, and I'm really tired of your. It's out to, man, I don't know none of you, I don't have no problems with none of you, I don't know none of you, I don't want to know none of you.
Councillor.
It's. Exactly. With your damn attitude.
No, problem, Todd.
Point, order. Councillor Verberbank.
I would like to make a step. I'm not resigning, this is about me being terminated, so are you guys terminating me or not? You guys don't, see, you guys don't even have the information to even say that you're gonna terminate me or not, this is what I'm not understanding.
There, is there a second? Is there a second to accept?
I'm not resigning, so you're not accepting anything that I'm resigning, I'm not resigning, I'm here to get terminated.
Take a second.
On what motion?
Councillor Verberbank made a motion, councillor Ferguson seconded a motion to accept the resignation.
You understand that? I'm not resigning.
I'm not terminating you.
No, but then I'm really confused, so what am I even here for? What am I here for?
Vacancy.
You, you have due process rights, you have.
Really, I have due process rights, really, you guys did not, you guys have not been doing nothing right since I've been here. Really, I have due process rights, really, you guys did not, you guys have not been doing nothing right since I've been here. In this position. That is my opinion, see, you guys can laugh all you want to, because that's the problem with this council, you guys laugh off everybody's problems. No, I'm not letting you respond to me, you need to. This is an executive meeting. See, that's another confusion. No, you guys stop, I just want my paycheck, that's all, that's it, I'm not resigning.
I will sign this and we will.
I'm not resigning. I came here to get terminated.
Can we vote on this, please?
Thank you.
I I strongly suggest.
So we need to confer with CIS, I do believe.
They, if they would like, they, there's a motion on the table, accept her resignation. I I know, but at least you're going forward, maybe we can have that conversation with them about how things unfold and where to proceed. As long as you accept the resignation, it can be posted.
In the letter, I do believe it states that.
She's not here. You have a motion on the table to accept her resignation, it is a resignation when when she is saying, I am here to get terminated. The actual verbiage, you can consult with CIS, I strongly. You can't confer with the insurance company?
Oh, no, because she didn't resign.
Okay, but you're not, but you're not a lawyer, so we'll consult with the lawyer.
She demanded to get paid for a month and a half ago, or last month's pay, where she never turned in her time card. She has turned in her time cards.
I did pay her. I don't know, but that's what I'm saying.
So there's a couple of different issues going on, there's one, her lack of commitment to the job, she has stated to people that have come to me saying. Oh, Sue plans on quitting, Sue's gonna quit, where do I apply? So she has put out to the public that has been brought to me that she, her intention is to quit. I strongly, I strongly believe by what she said, she might be terminated so she could possibly qualify for unemployment. That's totally fine, that's out of our hands, that's up to the unemployment office to conduct their investigation. On if she is eligible for.
Are we gonna move on with the?
With the motion that's been presented.
The motion was to accept her resignation, although she stated it it was not a resignation, however, she wouldn't stay. To accept the conditions of the employment. Because she wouldn't have a conversation or a discussion, really, so. I mean. The actions are resignation, the words are not. So that is up to you, how you would like to.
I myself would like to rescind. My action prior. Because I want to talk with CIS about that. And I will have them go ahead and direct me like they did with this, you know, point A, point B.
And also, she's been asked to show up to work, and she is not showing up to work, which. So reset your motion, correct? Person saying a motion to. I stand the original motion. Motion has been rescinded. We have your motion to table this until further. Confirmation from CIS.
Employee situation. Will be. Tabled until I can have further review and rest from the B I F.
Actually, I will be the one contacting the CIS, being that. I will do that as soon as we can, maybe we can get this issue resolved. Motion made by council of urban bank, saying by council of person. To table. The current vacancy maintenance to. Going to prefer to CIS, well, I can prefer to CIS. No discussion, council of urban bank, there you go. Council capital, council person. Perfect, three eyes to three open seats to table the. Moving on to purchase a microphone for the owl, it's two hundred fifty dollars.
There's a dead spot right around here, probably. Especially when you talk, I don't know if you watch the videos. It's really hard to pick up, they actually said that we needed to probably for the size of room, but instead of. We can put this on a a higher stool, mount it from the ceiling. Get a microphone, which is specifically for dead spots. Or get a second one that is more strategically placed. So two hundred and fifty dollars is cheaper than buying a new. A thousand dollar, fifty dollar owl.
Council capital.
Like the second that question.
Thank you, council first to make a motion, council capital, second to motion to purchase a. Second microphone for our owls, so we have better coverage for. For listening to this. Open for discussion. No discussion, council of urban bank. A secondary microphone for our owl. Okay, we are at um. We have not had any takers on our Mitchell facade grant, because we have a fifty percent match. I would like the council to consider waiting if you can go fifty percent match for Mitchell facade grant, which is five hundred dollars.
So there, you guys didn't set that requirement, but the hopes in the discussion was that somebody would want to spend some of their own money and also get like. But that no taker, so um. It it's five hundred dollars. And we do have somebody that's interested, and they have asked to have that waived. Yeah, so if you just waive it for the whole program, but I didn't want to do that without, you know, checking, since it had been posted that way.
Council first, I can make a motion. Wave the fifty percent match. Council Ferguson made motion, council of urban bank, seconded motion to waive our fifty percent match for Mitchell facade grant, over for discussion.
It's like a rehabilitation, the. From community development funds.
And you can use it on paint, yard, flowers. You know, you just kind of put together a proposal, it can be for businesses or residents, it can be anywhere. Just kind of what it is that you want to do, and then you gotta show, it's like a reimbursement. For everybody, Mitchell.
That they can have a rehabilitation.
Yeah, like if you wanted to plant grass or, you know, like paint your house or new windows or. Whatever, it makes it look more attractive and beautiful. You get a application from the office and.
Well, we did post it in the council period, part of our community development money that we received. Earmark five thousand dollars, so it's ten grants available. It's been up there for eight months.
I know, but it was during winter.
So, and maybe by waving fifty dollars, so basically it's a reimbursement, you you show us your improvement and receipts. We reimburse you up to five hundred bucks.
Okay, I was questioning what waiving this fifty percent match, what does that mean? That you don't match it a hundred percent, well, you know, what do you?
It's a hundred percent reimbursement, because before you were hoping that the community would. Get the five hundred dollar grant, but they put in five hundred.
Right, up to five hundred of their own money.
But since we haven't had no takers, your room. You've asked, I've asked that video, so we can hopefully encourage people to.
What are you gonna do a hundred percent?
Zero match.
Is there anybody excluded from the grant?
Oh, sorry, yes, council, sorry. No, 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 city related people. No, I'm sorry, I'm tired.
Randy.
So my first question is, you didn't get my email, I immediately emailed you about this grant. Um, to see if I could qualify for it, and I never got an email back, and I'm wondering if it's because I sent it from a different email that I had originally given you about a year and a half ago. Or if you just didn't get my email, you know what I mean, because I've had issues in the past with that, so I just want to know, I was interested at first, however. That was before I decided I would go ahead and apply for council, so there's nothing to say, I'm gonna get that position anyway, but um. So hey, did you get my email about it?
You don't send emails to me, I do not.
That day, that very second, I was like, oh, I can buy hoses and stuff to make my house, you know what I mean, to do stuff around the yard. This was a couple of months ago, I'm sorry, I can resend it, but I did send it to you.
Send it, if any inquiries go to the city. Unless you have a question for me as a mayor, anything pertaining to city goes to the city. If the city feels I need to be a part of that email, you will forward that email and direct everything to city.
Okay, when you got that mayor for work, you might want to clarify that at the bottom, because it says something like.
Okay, that's my mayor's report, you're, the facade grant is what we're talking about, my mayor's report is my mayor's report.
I know, I'm just saying that that's what it said, it said, let me know.
Because you had mentioned in your report about the facade grant being available.
I see where, I see where.
Okay, that's why you didn't respond, I don't know why you didn't respond, I know.
Okay, I normally do respond to my emails, except I have a cutoff on Friday at five, so Monday morning at nine, I try not to do any C business unless it's.
Okay, so if I. Position and I get it, I can't get the grant. Okay. Wait, okay, so I'll just wait for the.
Okay, so we have motion, motion made, motion secured. No further discussion, any further discussion, no further discussion, council of urban bank, have you heard? Councilor capital. Council is approved to waive the fifty percent match, so we are at a. Mutual, the side grant, there's ten five hundred dollar grants available, we have maxed in five hundred, five thousand dollars earmarked for this project, thank you council. Purchase playground equipment, council is given um. At the last conference, the clerk and I attended, there is um. A playground people there, they have a. They accept a forty percent off on their playground equipment right now, and you do get free shipping. So you're looking at a pizza fifty thousand dollars, government thirty five thousand, something like that, and I believe it all put in packet.
But I also went onto the website and added more, because they have more on their website, not just what we're given.
So, I I I'm hoping that council had time to peruse through them, or if the council would like to maybe put a dollar amount. Because we need to get it ordered by, I think, June first. Or um, that way we can, we can acquire the equipment. At that reduced cost.
What is our limit on that?
What do we remark to part seventy? And there's quite a lot of equipment that you can get, or like what we were thinking was gonna be forty to thirty thousand, you get like twenty seven. And we need to, if we're moving forward, is updating that, we need to acquire that now, we can store it.
Then what I was a little bit unclear about is the turf, because they have the modified. Park, they have the rubber, or they have the hard surface spray, and then they got fake turd. Only two of those had prices, and so I kind of really want to get prices. But I feel like if you kind of go maybe on the lower to middle of the road, you know, twenty five to thirty five range. That still gives us enough money to put for some turd. And then then we'll have to, you know, sort out, I I don't know whether we're gonna get the playground or the park grant. That I applied for, but at least you have something to work with and.
Acquire the equipment, at least it gives us the incentive to move forward quicker. And air free delivery. I'm I'm a.
I mean, even number twenty one, you know, it's twelve thousand and it's uh thirty one. Eleven inches by twenty seven and four inches fifteen years, I think that that's, you know, it's not. Big compared to what these other ones are, but I think that's sufficient for us, I don't know where I see fifteen kids in our park. Or even, you know, uh, number eighteen.
We love to have a discussion about this, or have you guys already made your decision, because I was unclear when we spoke earlier, if the council has already told me to spend the money. Or if there's gonna be like a, you know, like a notice sent out to people, let let them know that you guys are gonna destroy the old equipment. The details on that, I mean, I know we spoke personally, but.
Like I said, is that council discretion, if they want to purchase the new equipment? By purchasing the new equipment, yes, we would, we would not destroy it, we remove the old equipment.
Well, okay, so. My question is, before they make this decision about this park stuff that's been there for so long. Can we get some facts about, is the insurance going to for Kirby base?
We haven't even got to the point of a discussion.
Like, you know, like my opinion doesn't really matter, because.
We need the council to make a motion. The second motion then goes up in for discussion. And we need to limit our discussion periods, because this is getting a little ridiculous, we're going on. I totally understand it, I totally understand it, not a lot of people are going to be in agreeance with getting rid of the old park equipment, but. Like you just stated, that equipment has been there for years.
Yeah, yeah, if you got just a a price in mind and you want. Yeah, yeah, if you got just a, a price in mind and you want me to kind of figure it out, or if you want to pick the thing that you want to pick. I, I'm considering, you know, some shade options. You know, so I, I know that you can get the tent thing each, you know, and just kind of do that deal. Or if you want something that's already built in shade, I don't know that it's quite enough shade. So, I, I guess what I'm saying is if you, if you want to pick out a particular thing, that's totally cool, but they don't really have good shade. So I wouldn't base it solely on that, because we can get one of those triangle.
Whatever those are.
Well, the one, the prime bill part, the little, the little kitty part, they've got a really cool, you know, triangle shade thing.
But at the price of the equipment, that gives us the opportunity to add shading, something to it.
Yeah, and we can keep some stuff like the swings and, and that, we're, all we're doing really is taking out the slide. And, and putting out something else that's more functional for them, educational, you know, for the little kids, for the bigger kids. It's something for everybody to, to play on, not just one big giant slide that they're scared to get on.
I'd like to make a motion, uh. I, I like number five, it's twenty-two thousand dollars eight hundred fourteen. Uh, so. Let me re, excuse me, resend that motion, start over, I'd like to make a motion, the dollar amount of twenty-two thousand dollars eight hundred fourteen. And referring to option number five.
Twenty-one by twenty-eight, twenty-seven users, yeah, that's pretty. That would be a good one, because that slide is, the slide is, I, completely important to, and twenty-seven users is pretty. Pretty good type, it's got a lot of different stuff on it, and the, the, these pictures really don't do it justice, when you go online and look at them. But it's got a lot of stuff for older kids, I believe too, but we would not.
Counselor Verda Ben.
I'd like to second, yeah.
Counselor person made motion, counsel Verda Ben, second motion to move forward with purchasing of number five playground equipment.
Just want to make a note that. Nobody else has, has. Have access to what you're discussing, or anything else, we have no pictures, we have nothing. Just want to make a note.
Glenn. Also keep in mind that during many, those, that's been a lot more than, than fifteen or twenty or thirty kids down there playing.
Like that piece of furniture comes with twenty-seven. Single. Right? Five, five to twelve.
Not necessarily like my one year old, but do you have enough? Maybe in cities or somewhere to show me some little littler, that, so that gets younger kids, and I know there's a couple of different cities where.
I believe, because we do have a, a, a number earmarked, and we're well below that number for that, so I think.
There's other things that we can incorporate, we just find this because it's on sale and a really good deal, so there, we're not totally done with redoing the part.
But I'm not, I'm still here for all this, I'm still trying to figure out what all of this.
First thing I've seen here. Randy.
Yeah, I mean, my main concern is that, you know, like getting rid of swings is silly, everybody does it everywhere, and. Uh, getting rid of that, I think she just said you weren't going to, but you told me earlier you would, so is that stuff set in stone, we're going to get rid of, is that what this voted? Or are you just going to purchase and you'll figure out later on, what you're going to get rid of? I know, but I just have a lot.
That is. No, I heard you, I heard you. What is on the table is purchasing of the equipment.
So we don't know yet what you're going to get rid of, that hasn't been set in stone. But how will the public be informed, and will there be an information section where we can find out?
It will be put, put on the agenda. Be posted.
Okay, well, my child wanted to say something real quick. Well, what I want him to say is, if you want some new equipment, there's so much room in the park that. You can put it anywhere, and I think the slide is like. Perfect for kids, I mean, five out of like ten people I bet have fallen off that slide, but then five have still survived. So you're ahead.
Right, and it's that one out of that five or ten, whatever, fourth year at, that. With that discussion, I totally understand the hard feeling of. Getting rid of something, but we do need something safer. I don't, I don't know, right now, if we're just trying to purchase the equipment, where we put it, how we put it.
Need to mention this, because I don't want it to happen, but at the same time, you can just put a gate in. And my question is, if it's the amount of safety that we're discussing, and that's what the lawyer has said to you. Um, what about the fact that there's no fencing around the park, so if people are just gonna let their kids loose anyway. They could go to the river, they could run up to the river, people speed and the river.
That would be some, we're, we're focusing on. We're not focusing on the complete safety of putting a bubble around the park, okay, we're trying to purchase equipment. That's all we're doing.
You know what I mean?
If you have concerns of overall safety, you can, you can write a letter to the city on your. I have to do earlier, what CIS said, that, that safe, that swing, that equipment is outdated, it's unsafe. Period, that's where this all came from, and we have money that was given to us by our state legislator. To spend the way we seem deserved, out of the council and the city needs to spend. This is a perfect opportunity to, to give you the old equipment, which has been stated, been there forever, bring new equipment, update equipment, period, end of discussion, okay? That's where, that's where we're at. If you have other concerns about safety issue, bring it up to the council later date, please. Any further discussion? Counselor Verda Ben, there you go. Counselor Dethmo. Counselor person.
Aye.
Thank you, council has approved the purchase of number five.
Yes, no.
At the dollar amount of three two thousand eight hundred and forty-nine dollars, something like that, Bill. Okay, moving forward. Ordinance enforcement interim, Hammond Burke, would you like to?
Uh, so. I have had anonymous complaints of property, um, nuisances. So I forward those to the ordinance officer, and he informed me that they will do their best, but likely not until after October. So. Um, fossil is in the same position, they are not getting their ordinances taken care of either by either county sheriff department. And, um, so I am sending out letters to those people that I'm getting complaints about, and I would do that anyway, because that's. Not time spent for Jeremiah. So, uh, I guess what, after thinking about it. If we are just interim until after Lucas gets trained and on board and is in his own car. And they can start enforcing again. Um, I am happy to send out the letters and send out the tickets if maybe. Or you can come up with something else.
Yeah, like Jeremiah directed you do, anyway, so it's. He said, can you go ahead and send out those letters?
I would do that anyway, even if we were not in this position, but. Just to double check that, because his process has been to go and talk to people instead of sending out letters. Well, I can't go around and talk to people, I have to just send out letters. And unfortunately, it's not, it's not a very nice way of doing it, and Jeremiah is doing it a very nicely, and I don't. I, I don't, I don't know if that was working or not, so this is the problem, I'm sending out the letters, so at least. The people are being notified of their violations.
Yeah, if it needs to move forward, probably that's where the sheriff's department.
The sheriff's party is not going to do anything reliably until after October. And that is not faring well with the business community, the bit, I, one particular complaint was from. A member of the business community, another one was, uh, an anonymous person. Um, and so. We can't ignore enforcement, because e- especially with the tourism season here. And things like that, we cannot just let things go, so.
So you need a motion to allow you to continue to send up letters during this.
No, I, I've been doing it anyway, I guess what I'm saying is, once it goes past a letter and somebody doesn't comply. Then what?
So that's where we're at, we need to know how to move forward after the letter and.
After, uh, non-compliance, I mean, it, I can send out the ticket. Or we can ask the sheriff's department to try to get to it, but I, I don't. It doesn't sound like that's gonna be a viable option to offer. When, when they took this on, we had two other, two or three more deputies.
Yeah, I'm watching you.
But if, if you're going to, to write out a ticket for, for, for a violation of, of non-compliance, and you need to make sure that you're right to figure out correctly. Because if it's covered out correctly, it won't, it won't, it won't be like, I mean, it won't be, it'll be held up. And also, also any, any fire, fire organs, um, violating fire TV, because they won't be right. And I do have a ticket book for that myself, so. And I can, I can use that part of, part of the fire, fire order, so, I mean.
Aren't you already supposed to be doing?
I do do that.
Yeah.
So that would, that would like it, if somebody's complaining about somebody that was going yard.
But you can go either way with that, it can either be fire or nuisance, right, and so. I guess it depends on the.
He's really busy, it sounds like as it is anyway, and I, and I don't have the phone helping her out with that part of the fifty, forty fire.
But when you, yeah, but when you send the certified, so those have to. Oh, I see what you're saying, okay, okay.
Or if you get a report of somebody's yard, have the fire department take a look at it, and see that they.
Okay.
Can submit a report, submit, you know, some people write what things that are.
Okay, got it.
Okay, so that's the end of that discussion. So ordinance is resolution, we are using homeless ordinance number two oh one camping within the city, first reading.
We have just a little bitty why we're doing this, I feel like because of the public comment, people are not. Um, maybe understanding.
These are why, again, to have a homeless ordinance in act is by July, but if we don't. If they want to, they're able to camp wherever they want.
Okay, talking about word.
Yes, if we don't have something in place by July first, we have to fall under the state guideline, which is. Let them camp anywhere, they can camp within the city right away, you can't do anything about it. You cannot forcibly remove them, because then they file lawsuits in the city.
So this don't pertain to personal property?
If it weren't, give a better description of the reason why we need those ordinance.
Well, I understand that, but. Can you? And you all, does that mean that you really, uh. Tell me what I can do on my property, or is this just an ordinance to keep the homeless? Uh, from camping on the street?
So they, they can, they can camp in your yard. They can.
Homeless.
Yes, they can. They. There, there really isn't a lot you can do about it, if, if ten of them wanted to camp right in your front yard, yes, they absolutely could. You don't have any teeth, you don't have any way, any backing to, you know, call the sheriff's department, they know, uh, sheriff, we have this ordinance that says here. So there's, then this describes the process that you can remove their things, because there was a lawsuit when they started cleaning up the camps. And with their stuff, not junk, and so now we have to store stuff, we've been cleaning up the camps and things like that. It protects your property from the rights of way of the city street, let's say, you're right here on Nelson. And they want to camp on the sidewalk, but yet it's Will's property, you, there's nothing you can do, it's city property. Or it's private property, and, and so it, it has nothing to do with you camping or city camping. Or legally camping with people that have not been asked to camp where they are doing. It's protecting your rights as a citizen, but if you don't have something in place, we have to fund a place for them to go. Or allow them to camp wherever they choose, that could be up the boardwalk, it could be, uh, on private property or on a public property. They could be in the restroom, they could be anywhere, and we do, are starting to have a little bit of a problem. And there have been fire damage where a person was sleeping on the ground, but it's very. Very scary, so there's been reports of these kind of things going on, and you just don't want a bigger problem, and you don't have any recognition to go.
So if you pass this ordinance, it's gonna make everybody say. I am.
Yeah, it's not to, it's to make sure that we have a way of. Not so much keeping the homeless calm, but it's a way of dealing with.
Right.
Because like you said, if, if it comes to it now. We have to store all this stuff.
For thirty days and.
And there are some communities that just aren't. Paying attention to this, um, and the homeless, also whichever, both. They're savvy enough to where they can go on somebody's website and say, oh, well, I see the city of Miffl doesn't have an ordinance, let's all. Go there, we'll just go wherever we want to. So this is protecting our city, our citizens, if we don't have it, we're at the mercy of the state, which is. I don't know who I think that first.
Um, okay, I think section two oh one point two needs to be rewarded a little bit. Because as it's writ, as it's written right now, you're not allowing any camping on private property. It needs to be either the word homeless. Or unapproved, something needs to be put in there, not just plain camping, okay, you need to define. Who's doing the camping, because right now you're saying that camping on residential property is not permitted, that's a need, you need to say. Uh, homeless. Or somehow you find that camping, homeless camping on residential property is not permitted, um, individual camping.
I'm not too sure you can word. I think, I think we'd be more troubled if we depicted up to this home. Because they were targeting that group.
So you're not gonna sit there and say that somebody can't have somebody camping on their property that they approve of. Somebody else can do it the same way, so can you say? Yeah.
So basically, if, if, if these stories get passed, it's not like. Whoever's can't run their property can't know they can't do anything. Correct? What it'd be is, if you don't, if you're, if you're not. What it'd be is if you don't, if you're, if you're not approved to be on that property by that landowner. We have the ability, once the ordinance is enacted, to move forward with removing them. And not having to store their stuff, not being worried about a lawsuit. We have something to go on.
But you can't put the word not approved by landlord. That needs to be worded in, not approved by landlord.
If so, Bill, I. You were supposed to be working on this for a really long time and then it got dumped on me. So all of this work session, these things could have been brought up. Before now.
Um, I gave you one uh on this thing and it's, it seems to be dead in the water. So I don't know. I put like a.
Is there, is there an issue in the wording? And did, didn't you copy that off somebody else's or?
Are you, are you?
You wrote that, right?
Claiming that I plagiarized?
No. Yeah.
Yes, I did plagiarize.
We're clarifying. Well. I already feel like I'm on a burner.
City of Jefferson, the city of Jefferson.
That is basically from the city of Jefferson.
A lot of people have used this particular.
We basically incorporated what Dave already had approved by their city attorney. We can always send the charge to the attorney for another five hundred dollars.
But you could do, you could do a read. You can do.
Or we can do a read.
And.
We move forward.
Would like to read it.
Please. Ron, you have a question or a question or three? How's this gonna affect our resident home? We don't have a resident home.
Yes, we do.
Paul, Paul lives in the county.
He's not in the city.
We have two.
Who?
One is not in the city.
Right, that's our version. That's county's issue.
Um, I threw away the burned material that was.
That, that, that is our, that one. Could potentially be our city issue, which we would need this ordinance.
Right.
Passed to where we can say.
I'm gonna read this. The ordinance two oh one, an ordinance creating a new chapter of the city of Mitchell ordinance concerning camping within the city. Whereas this ordinance relates to camping on city property establishes objectively reasonable regulations on sleeping and. Warm and dry, in compliance with the ordinance one nine five point five three zero. Whereas the city of Mitchell, like many other cities in Oregon, is experiencing an increase of. Unsanctioned camping in public spaces and rights of way. The entire state of Oregon at all levels of government is struggling to address. Issues related to affordable housing and those without adequate housing. And whereas the city parks were designed and intended for recreational uses and outdoor activities, public rights of way, city parks and other city properties. Were not designed or intended for overuse in the same way as the recreational campsites. People living in makeshift camps in the right of way, local parks or other public spaces. Often lack access to safe and sanitary restrooms and trash receptacles. Resulting in unsanitary conditions from improper disposal of human waste and trash. And whereas this ordinance is intended to address health and safety concerns. Of the traveling public, city residents, individuals residing or camping within the city. This ordinance will promote a safe environment, limit unsanitary conditions, allocate public resources. Effectively and meet legal and humanitarian standards for all people within the city. And whereas. The city recognizes the very nature of the problem of people experiencing homelessness. That has contributed to individuals locating themselves in the right of way and on publicly owned property. This ordinance is intended to provide for the humane treatment of individuals experiencing homelessness and. Whereas the city finds that limitations on the locations of campsites in city property. Supports the safety of people in the campsite as well as traveling public and community. And. Whereas this ordinance does not criminalize or otherwise subject an individual to citation for the acts of sitting. Flying, sleeping, or keeping warm and dry on all public property. Instead, this ordinance establishes reasonable time, place, manner, regulations that balance the rights of people. Without shelter to use some public spaces.
Greg and Steve are talking.
Yes?
Just saying.
Come on in.
What, you're just saying what?
Oh, sorry. No, I'm sorry, Krista.
Okay. Whereas the ordinance does not criminalize or otherwise subject an individual to citation for the act of sitting blind, sleeping, or keeping warm and dry. On all public property. Instead, this ordinance establishes reasonable time, place, manner, regulations about rights of people without shelter to use. Some public spaces to meet the obligation of the city's obligation to manage public spaces, meet their intended uses, and. To maintain health and safety for everyone in the city. Now, therefore, the city of Mitchell ordinance follows section one findings recital set forth. Above or hereby adopted and support for the amendments herein. A new chapter of the city of Mitchell ordinances are hereby adopted and followed. Definitions used in this chapter, camper camping means pitch a recreat, youth occupied camp facility for the purpose of habitation. If anybody needs others, I walk around. As evidenced by. Camp facilities include but not limited to tents. Tents, temporary shelters, motor vehicles, or recreational vehicles. Camp paraphernalia includes but not limited to. Tarpaulin, cotts, beds, sleeping beds, blankets, mattresses, hammocks, or outdoor cooking devices or utensils and same similar equipment. City administrator, city clerk, means city of Mitchell, city administrator, city clerk. And their design needs, dwelling means a single unit providing complete independent living facilities. For one or more persons, including permanent provisions for living, sleeping, eating, cooking, and sanitation. Establish campsite or to establish a campsite means any place where one or more persons have established temporary sleeping accommodations. By use of camp facilities or camp paraphernalia for more than twenty-four consecutive hours. Motor vehicle means a vehicle that is self-propelled or designed for self-propulsion. Parking lot means a developed location. That is designed for parking vehicles, whether developed with asphalt, concrete, gravel, or other material. Personal property means that. Can be reasonably identified as belonging to an individual that have apparent value or utility. Public property means any real property or structures owned, leased, managed. By the city, including public rights of way. Public rights of way means all property dedicated to public for transportation purposes. And administered by the city, including streets, roads, bridges, alleys, sidewalks, trails, paths, and all other. Public ways and areas managed by the city. Recreational vehicle or RV means a vehicle with or without motive power. That is designed for use as temporary living quarters and as further defined by the Department of Transportation, O A R seven thirty-five, division zero two. Examples include motorhomes, camping trailers, tents, trucks, campers, and camper vans. Solid waste means any garbage, trash, grease, yard waste, food waste, or other. Discarded materials, stores, stores need to put aside or accumulate. For use when needed. Two foot four, sleeping or place to leave in a location. Vehicle means motor vehicle or recreational vehicle. Permitted camping on private property notwithstanding provisions in ordinance one fifteen one thirty to the owner of commercial or industrial property. Public F C religious institution or place of worship may allow vehicles or tent camping to. Persons provided that such accommodations are made free of charge and occupancy is limited to no more than two vehicles, tents, and at the same time. Any combination and vehicles or tents that are located with on-premise parking and are spaced. At least ten feet apart and all items and materials are stored in vehicles or tents or in separate storage area. That is screened from view adjacent properties, public rights of way. Campers are provided access to sanitary facilities, including a toilet, can-washing, and trash disposal facilities. With such facilities being at least twenty feet from the property line of residential use. If not fully contained within the building and inspection is performed by the city. To confirm that sanitary facilities are in place, required setbacks are met, and any storage areas. Are screened before vehicle or tent camping is commenced. A property owner who allows camping pursuant to subsection A of this section may revoke that permission at any time. And for any reason, notwithstanding provisions of this section, city administrator, city clerk, may revoke the right of a property owner to allow. Camping on property described in subsections A of this section upon finding that the property owner. Or a camper has violated any applicable law, ordinance, rule, guideline, or agreement. Or that any activity occurring on that property by a camper is incompatible with the use of a property. Revoke permission for a person to camp on public property. Upon finding that the person has violated any applicable law, ordinance, rule, guideline, or agreement. Or that any activity occurring on public property by the person is incompatible with the use of the property. Any person who's commissioned to camp on property has been revoked for certain, to subsection B or C. Other section must vacate and remove all belongings from the property within twenty-four hours of receiving such notice. Except as otherwise allowed in this section, camping on residential property is not permitted. Except expressly authorized by the city of Mitchell ordinances, it is unlawful to establish use or occupy campsite in the following locations, city parks, including properties. Identified for development or future parks within visual line of sight from constructed and signed recreational trail on public property. Following city-owned facilities and so seeing the grounds that are open to the public, city hall, whole restroom, property, cemetery, E M S property, Mitchell. Community hall, city-owned maintained parking lot unless identified as vehicle camping lot. Public rights of way adjacent within five hundred feet or lot of parcel containing elementary school. kindergarten school, daycare, children's, child care, providing services to homeless persons. Public rights of way adjacent to a lot parcel containing dwelling, excepted expressly authorized by the code, it shall be unlawful for any person. To store property. Personal property on public property, notwithstanding the provisions of this section, city administrator, city clerk may temporarily authorize camping to. Camping or storage of personal property on public, public property. By written order that specifies period of time, location, upon finding it in, be in the public interest and consistent with city council goal. Scheduling a notice, campsite cleanup. Cleanup of illegal campsites will be scheduled by the city administrator or law enforcement. Signs should may be posted advising the camping is prohibited. Whether or not a sign is posted, be a specific dated and time notice will be posted and distributed in the area of scheduled cleanup. At least seventy-two hours before the cleanup, notwithstanding some sections A and B in this section, cleanup of campsite may occur immediately. And without notice, if a law enforcement officer determines that either of the following conditions exists. An emergency such as possible site contamination by hazardous material. Or where there is immediate danger to human life or safety or illegal activity other than camping at the time of the cleanup. As provided in the written notice posted and distributed under subsection B of this section, the telephone number. Will be provided where information on picking up the stored property can be obtained during normal business hours. Written notices will be in both English and Spanish. Copy of all notice will be presented to local agents if this delivers. Social services to homeless individuals in Wheeler County. Removal storage and retrieval of personal property. Personal property will be separated from solid waste during cleanup. Solid waste will be immediately discarded. Items of personal property will be turned over. To law enforcement, public court, store maintenance, and stored at city hall, E M S hall. The personal property shall be stored for no less than thirty days, during which time it will be reasonably available to persons claiming ownership of the personal property. When conducting a campsite removal, the city shall arrange in advance. For a location for personal property to be stored. Any personal property that remains. Unclaimed for thirty days after the cleanup may be disposed of, sold, donated, used. Or transferred as abandoned personal property, but no waiting period beyond thirty days. Is required prior to the disposal sale, donation, use, or transfer. Weapons, drug paraphernalia, and items which reasonably appear to be either stolen or evidence of a crime may be retained. Or disposed by law enforcement in accordance with applicable law enforcement procedures. The city administrator, city clerk, and law enforcement officers charged with enforcement of the code are hereby designated. To administer and enforce the provisions of this chapter. All violations of this chapter shall be enforced. Under one fifteen and one thirty-two of the ordinance, violations of the chapter shall carry a penalty. At fifty dollars for the first violation and one hundred dollars for each subsequent violation. The remedies described in this chapter shall not be exclusive remedies for the city violations of this chapter. Interpretation. This chapter is to be interpreted consistent with the applicable state statutes and providing the protections required by state statute. Notwithstanding these and, and the city ordinance provisions in existence. At this time, any criminal or civil enforcement actions were in hand shall remain valid and in full force and effect for persons. All cases filed or commenced during time set provision portion thereof were operative. Separability of the section, subsection, paragraph, and clauses of this ordinance are separable. The invalidity of one section, subsection, paragraph, or clause shall be null. Not affects the validity of the remaining section, subsection, paragraph, and clauses. classification and provisions of the ordinance shall be incorporated into the stitch. City official ordinances in the words ordinance or section may be changed to code titled chapter or. Another word in the sections of this ordinance may be renumbered or relettered and the city clerk is authorized to correct any cross references in any type of error. Effective. This ordinance will go into, where's the table? Go into full force and effect on the thirtieth day after the city council enforcement. As provided in the Mitchell Charter adopted.
I have to speak. When I get a chance.
Okay. Uh, there, for some reason, you're not on the loudspeaker. Hang on. Okay, are you there?
Uh, yes. Now I can't hear you.
Can't hear me?
Uh, yes. No, I can't hear you, Krista. Can you hear me? I still can't hear you. No. I'll speak, but uh, I'd like to hear what, what is said.
Oh.
I can't hear anyone. I'll wait.
Go ahead.
Maybe you can text her. There's a text.
Oh, I can hear you now. I hear Brandy.
Go ahead.
Okay, um, I have an issue with uh, section um, two. permitted camping on private property. Uh, C one. Revoke the uh, the, the, notwithstanding the provisions of this section, the city administrator, city clerk may revoke the. Right of a property owner to allow camping on property. And it goes on. With descriptions and I, I, I have an issue with that. What, what the city clerk can say about a person's, what they can do on their private property. And also section five. Codification. Where the provisions of this ordinance shall be incorporated into the city ordinances and the word. Words ordinance or section may be changed to code, title, chapter, or another word. And the sections of this ordinance may be renumbered or relettered. And the city clerk is the, is authorized to correct any cross references or any typographical errors. And section six, effective date. This ordinance will go into full force and effect on the thirtieth day after city council enactment as provided in the Jefferson Charter. This is the Mitchell Charter. That's all I have to say. I can't hear you.
But uh, it sounds like you guys can just say, hey, we can't have a camper there and. Or designate our vehicles and say that we're using them in a way. You, it, to me, it sounds like that. That you guys could come on our property and say, hey, you can't have this many vehicles. Hey, you can't have somebody in a camper. That's the way it's written. Or at least how it sounds to me as well. And I know that was Judy's concern before she left. Sorry, she said she couldn't hear us. I know I've had that problem. Or sometimes we push pause, although I don't know, just guessing.
With mute or, I mean.
Yeah. I don't know. Are you able to hear us?
Yes. But not now. Okay, I can't hear you now, I don't know what's going on. I I can't hear you.
Number three on that. You have to be based apart. My property if I'm have something to add to that or you know depending on where on my property I have around.
If you're allowing somebody camp on your property, the city cannot say. So this is this is forgiving, it has nothing to do with you allowing somebody camp on your property with your acknowledgement.
I I do, but you have to take it in context of what the whole document is saying, you're taking one slice of it and you're saying this is the absolute and it applies to me. When we read the whereas, whereas, whereas it sets up the condition of the homeless and all of that and and the homeless people. You're not taking that and saying, Kayla, we can't have that and it also is some discretion, it's kind of like with the the nuisance ordinance is, you know, i- if people are complaining and things like that. You know, okay, well then I'll send a letter or what have you, but if there's it some, it we just kind of let people, you know, do their thing, but when it starts bothering other people, that's when it becomes a problem, there's a discretion on who gets letters and who doesn't and it's not, so if if somebody, if you came to me and said, I didn't ask these people to be here, but this is my private property, we have this in place to protect your private property. Not not for us to say you are not allowed to have the person that you invited to your home. You have to take the whole document into context.
Oh, so does the city have? Does the city have a thing about, I mean, RVs and all that property already? Okay, so this is just that context and so it can't be used like she said, it can't be used in a different way because I know some city do have that regulation. And so that's why I just wanted to clarify that as well because I think it could be used differently.
From the occasion, right? From unfortunately, the possibility of having somebody camping on your.
Yeah, well, because the state just made that law where it's not illegal, so I get it, I mean, I can just say.
So if we don't have, if we don't have this in place by July first, we, they can come in where.
Because of that law. Right, I mean, I kind of understand that, I didn't realize it affected personal property, but I knew it affected cities property because I've been paying attention a little bit to the news, but.
There was, there was the one I go.
I did, I noted it.
Uh, um, I I just don't uh, appreciate the. I can't hear anything. I can't hear anything and I I I guess I'm being muted. The message I have is that the host just muted me.
Took me eight months to get them off my property.
Oh, well, I thought they could still get a ticket. So only if they're just knocking on people's plans, that's the way the rule is done? But if they're camping, they can live there and not get a ticket. I mean, is that the way it's been?
Yes, I'm here, can you hear me? I I just simply do not like that the uh, city administrator sat slash city clerk may revoke the right of a property owner to allow camping on property with contingencies. That that right there is uh, section two. Uh, C one. I I just want that in record that I am against that for many reasons. And uh, that that's just not right. Uh, property owners should be able to do what they want with their properties in the city limits with uh, certain, you know. That's all I want to say. Now I I now I can't hear you, I don't know what's going on with the the this, every time I turn my mute off so that you can't hear me.
Can you hear us now?
Yes, I can now.
So this is not to dictate what you can and cannot do on your property, it's giving us the city that could help protect your property from squatters unwanted people just doing what they want because right now they can do whatever they want, they can camp right on your doorstep.
We we don't have that problem here at this time. We can take this issue up at another time, don't you think, Steve?
If we don't have this ordinance in position by July first, we are at the state's mercy to follow under their guidelines which are way less worse than ours.
I I may, I mainly concerned about Dan and Mary Cannon and Gabe and Megan Salvage. So you know, I mean, are are what are y'all gonna do to these people, you're gonna take their income away?
Yeah, we are taking your income.
That is not affecting them in any ways you perform, it's protecting us from homeless, houseless, people wanting to spy. Has nothing to do with affecting anybody's personal property and the person person owning that property allowing what's being done legally to be done on that property.
Okay.
Thank you.
More quick question about this one. As far as the rules go, what you're saying is if we make a city ordinance, the state will will, what they say doesn't matter.
No, you're correct.
So the city has more power
Yes.
than the state in that sense. So, so why does the state, I mean, I guess I don't understand what the point of the state wasting their time if cities are just gonna go behind them. You know what I mean and and set up other rules.
I I do believe this is all stated in my, like, what you're saying with somebody filing a lawsuit about being a houseless, being having to store their stuff. This is where it all happened, we have to have something, but we don't have to have anything. But at council discretion, we need to have something in place so we have the ability to not let the squatter, the people doing what they do in other larger cities right now, freely do in our one square mile.
It is sort of like the mushroom thing, we don't have a mushroom thing, we don't have a a a place to allow people to sell mushroom. You know, so we, even though it doesn't necessarily hit directly at home, we still have to take care of some of these other things just like everybody else.
No, I'm gonna understand it, I guess I don't, I guess I'm just saying like, why did the state even make the law, like, why are they even, it's not just about someone being sued, it is about people being on the streets, you know what I mean? So I just don't understand if cities are just gonna come behind and say no, you know what I mean?
That that's a a whole nother conversation of why the state can't just let the state. Yeah, we come in.
Yeah, I was gonna tell her that, you know, I'd explain her the finer lines of the way home, I'm driving her home. But yeah.
So that's our first meeting. You made a public hearings today?
No.
No public hearings. Okay, we read appointments of council members, we've had three people go out applications, submit applications, but they're all making council seats. At this time.
Yeah, four, this one didn't have a cutoff date. The notice that I got. The notice that I got for it didn't give us a cutoff date for when I can admit at the beginning of the meeting, it's two.
Okay, so.
And I guess it should be, because I tried to get one, she said she forgot it and so.
Okay, I've already made the three appointments I was going to make prior to two other applications coming in. But at that time of discretion, uh, how we move forward. May I per counsel seat six? I would like to appoint Ron Verba Bannett to council seat six at this time. On council's approval. Council have any questions? For Ron Verba Bannett being appointed council.
You just got your application, so.
Counselor person. If you're on, um, my question, I guess I have a in, I already know the answer, but since you've been on the board before in the past and, you know, and worked within the city itself in the past. Do you see where there'd be an issue with you having a problem with keep advocating yourself to them? Did not be in the past and oh, I got.
I will add that he's been to a lot of the trades, I know you've seen that, he's been to a lot of the budget trainings and he went to the small city meetings and um, and in conversation very um, progressive and I think he's really anti against staying in the past, I mean, ob- obviously honoring your history, but.
It's not so much what I know, I know what I what I can't do. And this guy now really heard about this guy about what my wife names when we sit at the table. And I voted against, and she voted for. Let me feel cocked on my own. Make her make a motion to accept or deny Ron Verba Bannett is kind of. You're accusing yourself? Because you have a right.
It's a position of off, it's an official position. I it's it's benefiting, it's an official position, it's not financial gain, it's benefiting stature.
I'd like to make a motion, reappoint Ron Verba Bannett to uh, council position.
Six.
Six. Counselor.
I'd like to second that motion.
Motion made by counsel first and say by counsel capitol to appoint Ron Verba Bannett to counsel position number six. We don't have to have a discussion for it, baby. Open for discussion. No discussion, counselor capitol, how do you do?
Hi.
Counselor Ferguson, how do you do?
Hi.
Welcome to the council seat number six, Mr. Ron Verba Bannett. I say it, so that's that way you can. And we'll see how this is like.
I, Ron Verba Bannett. Do you solemnly swear?
You solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America. The Constitution of the State of Oregon. And the charter and ordinances of the city of Mitchell. One of the ladies. The mini man.
Yeah.
For the city of Mitchell. To which I have been appointed to the best of my ability. To help me out.
Next, we have position number four, Greg Mooney. Greg is, um, I don't know if people know Greg, but um, he's shown a interest in being appointed to our council, does have a good background, is um, city manager work, things like that, so you have that paper in front of you. You have any questions for him, be sure to be willing to entertain that.
Yeah, Charlie can read. And then he says he writes reports.
Oh, you you need a. Where did you work as a manager?
Uh, Suzie Benz, Sun River Resort and North Bend, on the coast.
Did you, were you ever a manager?
I did a lot of planning, I've never, I didn't have a degree in planning.
But you did a lot of the planning and.
Yep.
Cool, cool.
Oh, good experience there.
Well, definitely you need, that would be your words, especially. Would you be opposed if the clerk or councillor or the mayor or the council asked you to?
or the council asked you to help chair or be on a committee?
I'd be more than willing to.
Any further questions? No further questions. And we get another, another public proceeding, Brad McTrum.
Which position would be given?
Uh, number four. Counselor Verba Bannett.
I make a motion that we accept Greg Mooney's council application and his appointment to council position four.
Counselor Catmore.
I'd like to second that motion.
Made by counsel Verba Bannett, taken by counsel Catmore to find Greg Mooney to, Mooney to council seat four. No discussion. Counselor Verba Bannett, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Catmore?
Aye.
Counselor Ferguson?
Aye.
Counselor Verba Bannett? Council's approved, appointing Greg Mooney to position four.
Yep, yeah, number four.
Greg Mooney.
I agree with you.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States of America. And the Constitution. Of the State of Oregon. And the Charter and Organizes. And the City of Mitchell. And will faithfully and honor me. To me myself.
Me myself.
In the office of city council.
In the office of city council.
Position number four. For the City of Mitchell. To which I have been appointed.
Which I've been appointed.
To the best of my ability. So help me God.
The lives of advocates for position two is clearly Ferguson. Is that a occasion in front of you?
I make a motion that we accept Kaylee Ferguson's application for city council for position two.
Counselor Verba Bannett, yeah. I'd like to second that motion. Counselor Verba Bannett. Counselor P. Verba Bannett made the motion. Counselor R. Verba Bannett seconded the motion to appoint Katie Ferguson to council seat number two. Open for discussion. Anybody? No further.
I've dealt with the young lady, she's so attractive. Very sharp, listens, remembers. And she'd be a great addition.
But you can't say that. You can't say that either.
No further discussion? Any discussion? No further discussion. Counselor P. Verba Bannett, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Catmore?
Aye.
Counselor Mooney?
Aye.
Counselor Ferguson?
Recusants.
Counselor R. Verba Bannett? Council's approved the appointment of Katie Ferguson, seat number two, for eyes one, recusing.
Or I'm not gonna say. I don't know what you're saying. Don't call me.
I, Kaylee Ferguson. I, Kaylee Ferguson. Do solemnly swear and solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution, that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America, of the United States of America. And the Constitution of the State of Oregon and the Constitution of the State of Oregon. And the Charter and Organizes and the Charter and Organizes of the City of Mitchell, of the City of Mitchell. And will faithfully and honorfully and will faithfully and honorably demean myself. Demead myself. In the office of city council. In the office of city council. For position number two. Position number two. For the City of Mitchell. For the City of Mitchell. To which I have been appointed. To the best of my ability. To the best of my ability. So help me God.
For me, council, we have a full council room. Congratulations to council for approving appointment of council. Uh, we are doing council comment time. If they, they, council, if they're making too many comments, you have to convince me to comment. If not, we will have a motion to adjourn and move on.
I just want to say thanks for. Thanks for welcoming council. I'm really eager to learn. And obviously this is my first time, so it's exciting for me and I'd love to give out every opportunity to learn more.
Perfect.
I would like to say something.
Go ahead, Juana.
It's council comment time.
Oh, we're at council comment time, babe. Real quick, please.
Oh, no, it's, I'm getting ready to go. I just wanted to say that this has been a great meeting. Um, the sound is, still needs working on, Steve. Uh, you, you can't hear some of the people when they talk in the back. And I would also like to say that I really enjoyed seeing Krista smile. Good night.
We did get, where's she gone?
Well, I don't know, I.
Cause we did get a, another microphone ordered, so hopefully sound is gonna be better for. You know, try speaking louder, but.
Well, I don't think it's you speaking. I think it's the, the distribution of the microphone. You need extra microphones to get everyone when they speak.
Yep, we're gonna remedy that, Juana. Thank you for your comment. Thank you for your, your, yes, thank you for attending.
Okay, good night.
Can we get a motion to adjourn with somebody else? Counselor Mooney, would you like to second your first motion? All in favor?